11th, 2025, meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full house this evening to celebrate the 2024-2025 retirees. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Finley, and good evening, everybody. At this time of the year, we prepare for an awful lot of things to bring the school year to a close, and that certainly is taking a moment to pause and recognize the current members of the Wilmington Public Schools staff who will be retiring at the end of the school year. This is a great honor and celebration that we have embarked upon at the end of each year. And earlier this evening before the school committee, we had the opportunity to gather with most of these individuals who are here tonight, all of these individuals here tonight, most who are retiring, and pay special thanks to their time here in Wilmington. Collectively, they represent 337 years of service to the students of Wilmington, our families, and our community at large. That's a lot of years of service, obviously, that will be moving on at the end of the 24-25 school year. With that special opportunity, I'd like to introduce them to our community. All of us have the chance to meet with them, as I said earlier. When I call your name, if you could kindly stand where you're currently seated and then just remain there for a moment. So first, we have Laura Stinson from the Woburn Street, who is physical education teacher and liaison; Lori Traits, Western Intermediate School Nurse; Diane Flaherty, Shawshene Grade Three Teacher; Irene Kennedy, Wilmington Middle School Food Service; Janice Baconziga, Wilmington Middle School School Nurse; Laurie Leone, Wildwood Pre-K Inclusion and Educational Assistant; Maureen Beraldi, North Intermediate Food Service Manager; Lynn Butterfield, North Intermediate Special Education Teacher; Patty Boja, District Cares Program Coordinator; Sharon Eldred, Woburn Street Educational Assistant and previously Wilmington High School Guidance; Rosemary Tremblay, Shawshene Reading Specialist. Also part of this group but not here this evening is Annette Bush, from the Middle School Grade Six Special Education Teacher; Joan Parisi, Beltwell Educational Assistant; and Ann Coats, District Transportation Minivan Driver. Please join me in extending to them our thanks for all of your years of service and hard work for our families. I wish you all the best in the next phase of your careers, life, wherever this may take you, but thank you for all of your dedication to the Wilmington community.
Thank you. I know the committee had a chance to meet and speak with most of you in the courtyard, and so we extend our thanks and congratulations to you as well. We did promise to get you out of here in five minutes, and so I will hold to that. Please feel free to go if you like, but I'm going to take a very, very brief moment here. While not a retirement, we do also want to acknowledge that Dr. Brand, our superintendent, is leaving us at the end of this school year after seven years of dedicated service. He's seen the district through any number of ups and downs, strategic plans, and notably a worldwide pandemic that shut everything down and made us rethink the way we educate our students. This district would not be where we are without his work, his dedication. And so while we're sad to see him go, we wish him the best of luck in his next role, and thank you for everything.
Thank you.
We do have a gift, but before that, Town Manager Eric Slagle is here. I don't know, Mr. Manager, if you'd like to say a few words as well?
Yes, I would. I just finished up my first year in Wilmington, and it was with a heavy heart that I get to see Glenn leave. It's become very obvious, very early in my tenure here, how lucky the town was to have a superintendent like Dr. Brand. It's clear that he cares very deeply about the students in his charge, and about the family, and about the district as a whole. I've seen lots of different districts, and they've been run in lots of different ways, but I haven't seen one that works quite as well as the one that Dr. Brand has set up here in Wilmington. So I wish you all the luck in the next phase of your career. I hope all the best for you, and I know that the Cape is going to be very lucky to have you come and bring your expertise there. So thank you very much for all you've done.
Thank you. Thank you. We will present you with this plaque at the conclusion of our meeting. Continuing on with good news and appreciations, we want to take a moment to recognize and appreciate this year's Wilmington High School Student Representative, Shabangi Tripathi, who is here with us this evening, has been an incredible addition to the committee this year, provided a tremendous amount of student insight, and so leaving us for UMass Amherst. So we are sad to see you go, but appreciate everything you've done for us this year. I do have a certificate and a gift from the committee for you as well, so.
Thank you.
I am going to want to take a picture, sorry. You got it, students?
Yeah.
Well, that's a funny note. Not right there.
No, anybody?
Just go like that, yeah.
Oh, you can't, you're going to get the phone still there.
Sorry, everyone.
Bye, see you later.
Okay, this should work.
All right. Better lighting?
Yes, better lighting. Excellent, congratulations.
Thank you.
For your service.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And good luck.
Thank you.
No pressure, but continuing with the good news, we have our Wilmington High School Athletic Update with Athletic Director, Mr. Dennis Ingram, and you have some student guests with you. Savannah, and is it Shivam?
Shavam.
Shavam. And I'm missing a name.
Leah Murphy.
Leah Murphy.
Oh, sorry.
All right, thank you guys for having us. We'll get right into it. Tonight, we're going to go over some athletic photos. We have the girls tennis MVP. We have 100-goal scorer in lacrosse, 200 strikeouts in baseball, some team recaps, summer clinics update, and we're going to talk about the fall sports informational night. Great job again, I talked about this last time I was here, but Shivam is with us right now, kind of his brainchild, if you will, and Dennis and Connor have kind of taken his lead, and they've done some great stuff for us on social media with game flyers and really fantastic way to promote all of our teams and all of our kids. And we want to kind of highlight Shiv because he is graduating, and he's been so important to Wilmington High School Athletics without playing many teams. So that's, we talk a lot about how athletics are so important, and I say to almost every kid that I come across, being on a team is the best thing that you'll ever experience. The ups and the downs, the bonding, everything that comes with it. And Shiv was a part of the athletic team without playing. He was recognized at team banquet, he was recognized on team senior nights. I hope he felt how important he was, and we have a picture up here. He even did his senior exploration project through the athletic department, doing some sports photography. So for one last final time, thank you so much, Shiv, and from the bottom of my heart, Wilmington Athletics loves you so much. And I can go through all the slides, and then if you guys have questions, if that's most appropriate, thank you. All right, Middle Sex League MVP, sitting to my left, is 10th grader Savannah Beatrice. This is her second MVP, so she won the league MVP as a ninth grader and as a 10th grader. We're very impressed and excited to call her our own. There's only good things from the girls tennis program in the future, so congratulations, Savannah. We had two 100-goal scorers in lacrosse this year. Junior Colin Allard could not attend tonight. On the boys' side, he scored his 100th goal, and on the girls' side, we had Leah Murphy, who scored her 100th goal very early in the season, so congratulations to both of those individuals. And then we had Aiden Balter, he's graduating senior. He had 200 strikeouts for his career. He was a Middle Sex All-Star, and he will be playing baseball at Hobart William &amp; Smith. We've got a great banner here. I think that was Friends of Wilmington Baseball who made that one, and this is his signing day with his friends, families, and teammates. He couldn't make it tonight, but we still wanted to congratulate him. So congratulations, Aiden, if you're watching at home. Now, if you guys had any questions for these three individuals?
Not so much a question, but first of all, thank you very much, not all of you, but Shiv, the fact that what you did is great, but the fact that you started something that will carry forward and help with the other students, I think is fantastic, because that's the sort of thing that can then last and grow. I think it's really impressive, and as somebody who's not particularly athletic, I would guess, I wasn't also a good photographer, so I did neither, but I can really appreciate what you did, and the good publicity it brings to the athletics and to the schools is fantastic, and I'm really impressed with that. And then, as I just said, what you guys do on the field and on the court is phenomenal. I'm just blown away by both of you in terms of your accomplishments, so thank you both for coming, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rexdale?
So Leah, if you scored number 100 at the beginning of the season, what's your tally now?
I have like 120, right?
Wow.
Okay, all right, so a lot of work to get up to 200 next year. Let's put any pressure. Savannah, I've known for a long time as a soccer player, and so this is great to see you excelling in tennis, which is also close to my heart. I want to make also a comment about Shiv, who I've kind of known forever, since I think, you know, kindergarten, first grade, that because of this kind of new trend of just like, ah, you know, I shoot pictures, and then I post them up here, I might be one of the few parents in Wilmington who still has a non-phone camera, so I have a camera with a zoom lens that I actually take and like photograph my kids' sports and so forth. And when I was at the tennis senior night this year, someone came up to me, just the fact that I had like an actual camera that wasn't a phone, and just said like, "Where do you post your pics?" At the moment, I had no idea what you were talking about, and I was just like, "I don't? What is..." I figured it out kind of after the fact, it's like, oh, right, this whole thing where like people have their own sites and put up their shots, but it's definitely become a thing, because I was pigeonholed, it's like, ooh, new photographer on the scene, let's find out where it is going to go. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Quickly to follow up to that, Mr. Rexdale, I think we are the envy of other towns, and so I will have families reach out to me from other places and ask, "Who's the photographer? Where are these kids getting all these pictures?" And the athletes actively wait for you to post. I'm sure you know that, right? But when are you posting, when are you posting? Like, they're so excited, and they're downloading it and putting on their stories, and so it is exciting to have seen this over the last few years, and not just athletic events, but you've helped us with promenade, and I'm sure a million other things, and then obviously it was his prom this year, so he wasn't photographing, and I said, "What are we going to do?" And he found, was it, who stepped in for you?
It was Carter Givney.
Yep, so we found he trained him and helped him, I mean, really, so you've been just incredible behind the scenes to help us sort of really showcase many of the things we do in the district, and we are really going to miss you, so good luck to you. And my friends, just continue to crush it, we are so excited, and so happy we get another year with you and another two with you, and just really excited to see what the future holds, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's great that, you know, we can, you've mentioned before, sort of how athletics kind of touches everything, and it's a clear example of how, whether you're participating or, you know, doing it in a different way, how it can make an impact. I will say, just as a very quick personal anecdote, I played one year of high school lacrosse, and I finished my career with zero goals, so congratulations. That is no small achievement, so.
Thank you.
But honest, to all of you, thank you for everything you've contributed to the program, and we'll continue to, so thank you.
Okay, guys, you are free to go.
Is this where you let them go? Okay, I wasn't sure. I'm like, does this, they get excused?
Appreciate you guys coming down.
Thanks for being here, thanks, guys.
Congratulations again.
We always joke with the kids when they're coming on that they have to make a speech, and their eyes get so wide, but thank you, guys, so thank you again.
Thanks, everyone.
So moving right along onto the spring team reviews. Boys track and field coached by Michael Kenny, regular season of two and three, fourth in the ML. Captains Ashvin Baker, Cameron Jenks, Dean Champa. All-stars were Ashvin Baker in the 400, Marvin Zgin in the triple jump, and Martin Fillessan in the long jump. Girls track and field coached by Joe Patron, regular season of two and three, also fourth in the ML. Captains Maeve White, Rebecca Hughes, and Tessa Capone. All-stars in the discus were Matty Kruger, in the two-mile, Charlotte Kylie. The baseball team, head coach Matt McManus, regular season of three and 17, fifth in the ML. They finished 56th in D3 in the power rankings. The team sports slot all of their teams into power ranking slots. Captains Aiden Balter, Connor Lavelle, All-Star Aiden Balter. And this picture that we added here, I really had to add it here, it was a special moment, I think, for the team, but I really enjoyed it as well, maybe just because of how old I am. Coach McManus brought in former Wilmington High School graduate Jason Bure, who pitched 10 years in Major League Baseball, was a 1994 All-Star, and probably 1994, I was 13, so this moment meant a lot to the athletic director, maybe it meant more to me than the team, but it was a very special moment to see a Major League Baseball player going back and forth, fielding questions from the kids, kids asking them any kind of question that there was, and him, you know, giving them honest feedback, so that was a really cool moment. The softball team, head coach Audrey Cabral-Pini, regular season of 10 and 10, third in the Middle Sex League. They were 39th in D3, but they qualified for the tournament because they had a 500 record. Their first game in the tournament, we went down to Sandwich High School, and the girls won, and then they turned around the following, a couple days later, and we went to Nipmuck Regional High School, which is in Upton, and the girls lost a tough one. Captains of the teams were Ava Boudreaux and Kirsten Moore. All-stars Charlotte Forcina, Ava Boudreaux, Olivia Raposa, and all-conference Ally McGiligott. Boys lacrosse, head coach John Forts, regular season of four and 14, for third in the Middle Sex League. They finished 36th in D3. Captains Colin Allard, Gus Lambert, John Mayer, Luke DiPerofio, with All-Star Colin Allard, who we spoke about earlier, with his 100 goals in the season. Girls lacrosse coached by Christopher Fazori, regular season of eight and 12, fourth in the Middle Sex League. They only won three games last year, so a huge improvement for them. They finished 30th in D3. In the state tournament, they beat Auburn 15 to 7, and then they lost to Bedford in the round of 32. Captains Ally Delgino, Arianna Cook, Jill Collins, Leah Murphy, and they had three All-Stars, Leah Murphy, who we had here this evening, Jill Collins, and Haley Spencer. Boys tennis coached by Rob Maylie. They had a regular season record of five and 11 for fourth in the ML. They finished 28th in D3. The last time the rankings came out was the only time they were inside of the top 32, so they were outside of the playoffs for the whole entire season, and then got in on the last season, so the kids stayed engaged, and Coach did a great job kind of navigating the season. In the state tournament, they lost to Medfield at Bebs in college. Captains Nick DiGiavani and All-Star Jay Carini. Girls tennis coached by Christina Woods, regular season of 12 and 5, that's a misprint, they won the Middle Sex League, I apologize for that. They were seventh in the Division III. In the state tournament, they beat Pembroke in the round of 32, and they lost a heartbreaker to Medfield in the round of 16 that came down to the last double set. Captains Jezlyn Ryho, Savannah Beatrice, Shabangi Tripath, and All-Stars... I'm sorry, Becky, you okay?
Yeah, that's the player.
Jezlyn Ryho, Allison Diarco, Shabangi Tripath, and all-conference and MVP, as we mentioned, Savannah Beatrice. We had a unified basketball team coached by Anthony Farady, assistant coaches Ashley Roca-Bauer and Elena Warren. They had a senior Seamus McNally, and they participated in Hoopapalooza, which is a district-wide, all the schools show up to Wakefield High, I don't know if anyone's been to the Gavin Middle School, they have multiple courts there, there's a DJ, they cater it, it's a really, really, really cool event for the unified team. We just came off of our awards in scholarship night for our seniors. We handed out over $56,000 worth of scholarships. A heartfelt thank you to everyone who attended and came down to present. Our most prestigious award is the Gerald Fagan Award, we've traced it back to 1967. This year's recipients were Jill Collins and Ashvin Baker. Congratulations to them, and to all of the award winner and scholarship winners that night. Summer clinics, sign up now, we're still taking people. They will be run by our phys ed teacher Jeff Carvalucy and our old athletic director, current hall monitor at the middle school, Ed Harrison. They're run by Wilmington High School coaches and student athletes, we have a trainer on site, lunch you can bring from home or you can buy from school. Our home base will be the Wilmington Middle School due to all the construction on the track and the turf. The first week will be here, and volleyball will be here. And we'd like to plug Fall Sports Night, which is closer than you think. It's August 17th at 6:00, and we have a guest speaker this year, a mental performance consultant, sports performance psychology, we've tagged his Instagram there, we'll be promoting it through social media. It's a great way to come down, meet the athletic director, meet the trainer, get some critical information that we try to get out to every athlete and every parent. Shameless plug for the Wilmington High School Athletic App, I don't know if they have that in Nauset High School, but you know, if you need me to consult, let me know. We're up to almost 1,300 downloads, which is quite amazing considering, I think, our enrollment is 620 kids. We will have some upgrades for the fall season, but we're also, we're very excited about where it is and the potential of where it can go. And I thought there was one more slide on the Hall of Fame wall.
That was just a memo.
Okay, okay.
So don't go anywhere, but thank you, Mr. Finley, for that. Any questions, though, first, before we move on? Questions? Sorry.
Yep, I had a few. So thanks for that update, that was great. First one was just wondering, because you put out the summer registration earlier, how the numbers are tracking this year versus last year's?
Yeah, this is the earliest we've ever put it out. Right now, without having the track and the turf as an option, track camp that we typically offer is by far our biggest camp, so that obviously takes a consideration into where our numbers are right now. With that being said, we are pretty much on par for where we would normally be minus track. That's a huge camp for us.
Yeah.
Huge. Everyone loves it, and unfortunately, there's only one track in town.
Yeah. Okay, makes sense. Then, since I have a captive audience, I asked the same question to Mr. Kyra a couple weeks ago about middle school sports program. I get a lot of feedback from a lot of parents wondering like why Wilmington doesn't have one, what can be done. So, yeah, he said that he was talking to you about it, and now with the way the bus and the school schedules are set up, you can kind of have the middle schoolers come to the high school for practice, and maybe even serve some like individual sports. So I was just wondering if anything's on your radar, and like, what are the logistics around that, and could something be done with that?
I talk to Mr. Kyra about that continuously. To have middle school students participate at the high school level, they need a waiver, and they need a waiver that's approved by the league, the district, and the state, and that's solely based on numbers. So if you can't just say, "We're going to take all the eighth graders up," the only way that that works is if there's a shared building principal. So like Watertown, for example, last year, their building was in construction, and they had their middle school and high school under the same principal, they required no waivers. All middle school kids became eligible for high school athletics. But for a kid in Wilmington right now to be considered for high school athletics, we would have to go through the application process, and we have it for some, for some, for some we don't, and for some, it's a lot of back and forth with the league. It's not just handed out like you would imagine. But we do offer it for some, but it's surely based on numbers.
So seems like it would be easier if there was a middle school program, but you have to start that up, and then fund it, and do all that kind of work then.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right, awesome, and then just one more.
I was just going to add to the, and part of this, we've had this conversation as well, part of it, the eighth grade students involved in the high school athletic program, that's one thing that Mr. Finley described, it's an entirely different thing to have standalone middle school teams.
Yeah.
It was a few years ago now, I know, that there was a bit of a canvassing of neighboring districts or nearby districts. Some have a handful of middle school sports teams, many don't.
Say handful is accurate, yeah.
And it's not that that idea has been put to rest, but we recognize that one of the fundamental logistics is field space, that with the design of the middle school campus, there's really great limitations, you know, in terms of, there's a field, but not a lot to that field out back. And the idea of having middle school students well easily transported here, that would be, obviously, there'd be some tension in terms of access to outdoor fields in the good weather and indoors in the summer.
Right.
So it's not something that's fallen off the radar, it's just we know that there's right out of the gates, pun intended, some logistics to have to think about there. We have talked about a couple of possible sports that could be, the ones you find are cross-country, correct, Dennis?
Yep.
Cross-country track and field, is it field hockey is one of the other more common ones?
Well, field hockey has an eighth grade waiver, so that, but that's getting put into it, it's, we would be taking from the population that we're trying to build something for, right? So there's to have to be some more kind of constructive conversations surrounding that.
Sure.
Right? But it is, it is something that's ongoing.
Okay, great. Now, I'm glad the conversations are happening and everything like that. My final question is, this is our last school committee meeting, but when we come back, we're going to start thinking about budgets. What can we do as a committee to help the athletics in Wilmington?
Do I have a pass?
Wow.
Can I leave the meeting right now?
Paul's out of here.
We're always looking to push the envelope on the budget, Paul knows that, and we're always taking a kind of a look around to what other districts are offering, and if it's appropriate for us to be offering the same amount of coaches, you know, looking at our current facilities, we do have a fairly new high school, but again, like taking a look around at some of the other districts that we compete with, do we have appropriate facilities with what they are offering?
Yeah.
So those conversations are always ongoing.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know, just kind of like, what is it that you see, like, understood? We don't have finite funds, but something we can build, maybe like a long-term plan under, you know, if this is something we want to invest over a long period of time.
Right. I can tell you that we have Dr. Brand, Mr. Genner, and myself approached the town manager about converting our baseball field and the practice field, softball field in the back into turf. We had a very difficult spring with the weather, we actually lost two home games because our opponents had turf, and we could play there, and our fields were not playable.
Yeah.
And what that also does is makes, it turns the baseball field into a multipurpose field, so it can be accessed by field hockey in the fall, soccer in the fall, lacrosse if baseball's not there, without, you know, ruining the infield or compromising the integrity of the field.
Yeah, okay, great.
So we have had those initial talks.
Yeah, I coach, you know, travel soccer in town, and yeah, I feel your pain with the rain. I think we've had 13 Saturdays in a row, and so many makeup games, rainouts, and all that, so yeah, makes sense. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for dealing with all my questions.
No problem.
Yeah.
Quick one. So one of the things that I really, really appreciate about our athletic program is the co-ops. Do you have a view for whether or not they'll all be sustained next year as well, or is that something you negotiate over the summer with the other districts?
Yeah, so co-ops are kind of on a year-to-year basis, and it also kind of gets back into those numbers things, right? Both schools have to kind of fit into the right alignment, so we, I believe we have plans to continue all of our co-ops that we currently have, and I don't think we'd be adding any new ones.
Good, thank you.
I just love the opportunity that that provides to students who otherwise wouldn't have for this particular sport they're interested in.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Others? Okay. Hall of Fame? So in your packet is a memo regarding the Athletic Hall of Fame and an update. We have obviously talked about this with this committee previously, and I appreciate Mr. Ingram's ongoing work with Mr. Kelly and the respective Hall of Fame to try to put together a plan so that you, as a school committee, have an overall sense of what ultimately is being proposed. So we tried to outline this in the memo that you have before you, more detail in terms of the length of the proposed Hall of Fame, the type of material that it's intended to be made from. There's certainly an important piece to point out that, obviously, because of the scope of this installation, Mr. Kelly, Superintendent of Public Buildings, has been involved, and will have to continue to be involved in the project. You can see the proposal that, there's a timeline of the summer, my understanding is that they are ready to go pending the school committee's approval to proceed. to proceed. Some other things in there in terms of the contractors that would be here in the summer, how, how their work would be governed, query checks and so on. And I think most importantly, from the financial standpoint, is what if any other obligations there would be for the school committee or the town of which the Hall of Fame or HOF has outlined and underscored their commitment to be taking care of all of those, those things. So it is here for both an update and, and hopefully the approval of the committee tonight. But obviously with, with Mr. Ingram here, a chance to ask more questions. He's been very integral and, and a, and a good bridge between the district and the town and the Hall of Fame, so.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Mr. Turner?
Two quick questions. One, installation during the summer, I understand that one of the summer camps is a three-week theater program and that's a shared wall. Do we have any concerns with noise or?
I don't think so. And that's been brought up from everything that we've been gathered from the construction company. As big of a project as it seems to us, it's very small to them and it should go up rather quickly with minimal disruption to anyone who's in the building.
And then the one last thing is I, the, the Hall of Fame committee is fantastic, but it's also volunteer-driven. So presumably if that volunteer group does go away, being part of the high school, it would ultimately be our responsibility if they went away to maintain that. So I, I'm not objecting to it at all and I think it's reasonable, but it's just something to be aware of. If those volunteers, you know, are no longer volunteers and they aren't replaced by new volunteers, at some point in time, it could fall on us to maintain it. I don't think it's a tremendous cost, but it's something to be aware of that even if in the next whatever many years they'll take care of it, eventually it's a part of the building that we'd be responsible for. So I don't, I don't think that's problematic, but just.
No, and I appreciate that comment. We're actively trying to get younger and younger members aboard so it can live on.
Thank you. I appreciate that effort and good luck with, volunteers are always fun.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions, comments about the Hall of Fame?
I guess I'll just ask one. Are you happy with the final look?
Yes.
Of this display?
Yes.
And thank you for keeping us informed and also navigating all of these pieces back and forth to us. We appreciate your time.
No problem at all.
Does this, are we looking for sort of final approval or just the consensus from the committee? Do you need a motion for that?
I think it would be a recommendation to have the committee vote to approve this, especially in the absence right now of a specific policy that you have governing this. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Dr. Rice?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you can.
I will make a motion to, there's a couple of things here. So initially provide permission for this installment and then, can I just include that in my motion?
You can.
Permission to install metal letters above the display that would read Wilmington High School Athletic Hall of Fame.
Second. Second by Mr. Golden, further discussion? All those in favor of the Wilmington High School Athletic Hall of Fame?
Great, excellent. Thank you guys so much. I'd like to thank Dennis Kelly from Public Buildings, he's been extremely helpful. And Jim Stewart and Bob Seren from the Hall of Fame Group, they've been fantastic. And lastly, I'd like to thank Dr. Brand. We've had many, many, many conversations and you know, I think you're a great role model, especially for someone who's maybe a little bit younger and. No, all kidding aside, I appreciate all you've done and all your efforts and nothing but the best of luck. Appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Did he influence the hairstyle? Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, May 28th, 2025. Is there a motion? Mr. Golden, second. Mr. Turner, all those in favor? Unanimous. We have approval of release of minutes from executive session. We met in executive session before this meeting and I'd be looking for a motion to approve the release of executive session minutes from May 8th, 2024, May 22nd, 2024, June 26th, 2024, and then April 18th and April 30th of 2025. Please.
A motion as, as appropriately redacted?
Sure. That's, that's appropriate. Okay, is there a second? Mr. Golden? Okay, so all those in favor of releasing those redacted? Unanimous. Thank you. Continuing on, we have approval of the Wilmington Middle School 2025, 2026 handbook. Is there a motion? Please.
Question?
Yeah.
There were organizational things that did not make sense with where text was put in from legal counsel. And I, I raised those questions and, and the response culminates, we'll, we'll wait for confirmation that it is okay to revise. So there were things like literally logically did not make sense where they were put in the document. And so can we conditionally approve pending revisions? What's the process with that?
I, yeah, I think that that would be appropriate. You know, and just as a, yeah, I, the, you know, the, this has been the approach taken for the school committee to approve the middle school handbook. It's not, it's not in the same place as the high school handbook because of graduation requirements and others, but I think that, I think the point's taken. The feedback will be conveyed and has been conveyed to Mr. Kyra around capturing those. So I think with that approach that you just suggested, Mr. Turner, I think that would be appropriate though.
Okay.
Yeah.
So a conditional approval essentially?
You'll make that motion.
Okay.
I moved that we conditionally approve the middle school handbook subject to revisions for organization.
Sure. Second. Mr. Golden? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
We have approval of Wilmington High School 2025, 2026 handbook. Is there a motion, Mr. Ragsdale?
A question.
Please.
That I, and I didn't, don't know why I didn't see this in the, in the first read, but I noticed that the high school handbook does not contain the current cell phone policy. There are references to cell phones here and there, part of the electronic device policy and the cyber bullying and no recording on buses and so forth, but the actual policy itself is, is not there.
We, would we?
And so procedurally, I'm not quite sure where we go from here because we do need to approve a handbook and I'm not sure if this, if that can, again, I'm not sure if this is something we can do essentially pending like the addition.
Inclusion of the policy.
The inclusion of that because I don't think we want to wait until the fall.
Right.
To be approving the handbook.
Mr. Turner?
And I also apologize for not noticing the table of graduation requirements in terms of credits is the 2024 class table. We, it had text below that talked about 25, 26, 27, but it's still the table from 24. And that's no longer the requirements for anyone. And so I, I think that table should be swapped with 26 and then just have the note at the bottom for 27. That's on page 11 as it currently sits. So that table ideally would be updated as well. I think it caused some confusion. So I don't know again to Dr., to Mr. Ragsdale's point, if we can, what the next steps would be on those two things.
Well, one thought of which you may not like, but if you are meeting again for retreat, that, that could be added to that. I know that the intention is not to add into that regular business. That's one thought that comes to mind. If you wanted to see, you know, the final copy of that, if you wanted to do a conditional approval.
From my perspective, that topic, I trust that it can be updated.
Sure.
And doesn't, I would be okay approve, same sort of conditional thing, provided that table gets updated, I'm fine with that piece of it. I don't want to speak to the cell phone piece.
Well, I don't, I don't, again, we're not looking for any revisions, just the inclusion of the policy. And so, I mean, I think that, I think that I would be comfortable that we can approve subject to the revisions that were, that we discussed now.
Sure.
To the inclusion of the cell phone policy and the adjustments to the graduation requirements that Mr. Turner has made. So I would be willing to make that motion if, if we're ready for that, unless there's additional discussion.
So let's do the motion. A motion to approve the high school, the 2025, 2026 Wilmington High School handbook with the inclusion of the cell phone policy and the update to the graduation requirements table.
On page 11.
On page 11. So that's a made motion by Mr. Ragsdale. Is there a second? Mr. Turner, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay. We have disposal of OIT surplus equipment. Is there a motion? Mr. Golden, second. Mr. Ragsdale, all those in favor? That is unanimous. We have approval, acceptance of WEF technology grants in the amount of $10,521.87. Is there a motion? Mr. Turner, is there a second? Mr. Ragsdale? Mr. Turner?
Discussion, yeah. So I want to highlight this again, the amazing work of WEF, another $10,521 of, of grants, including nearly $4,500 related to the robotics program, which we've seen the, the benefits of directly and others. And I would also be remiss to not mention that Dr. Leslie Quick, who has been a part of WEF for over a decade and was once a member of this committee as well, is actually stepping back from WEF. She has been the president, the vice president of the treasurer. She helped sustain that organization through COVID. And so her, her impact to the district has been felt for many years. And I wanted to just take the quick opportunity right here with this to highlight her, her service to Wilmington and public schools in Wilmington. So thank you.
I would echo that. All right, all those in favor of approving the WEF technology grants? That is unanimous. We have warrants, grants 38, 39 revolving 73, 75 and 76, local 106th through 108, food service 71 through 73, circuit breaker 29, special education 66 and 67, and payroll June 4th, 2025. Mr. Ragsdale, is there a second? Mr. Turner, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand, back to you.
Thank you. One item tonight under the report and there's a copy that's included in the packet. And for those that are at home, I'm just going to show the images that accompany this. So over the last few years, we've really tried to bring a spotlight to so many of the good things and accomplishments and achievements of, you know, our school system and certainly, of course, our students. And that includes at this time of the year, really pausing and recognizing where our graduates are headed. And so thanks to Ms. Ingersoll, who has put together this compilation, the models that of the last few years, what you'll see here is huge shout-outs and huge attention and focus brought to just that. We just obviously had graduation not that long ago here, another successful ceremony. A huge shout-out to the staff here at the high school who do just a phenomenal job. You can see those students from Wilmington that are moving on. We have five graduating seniors who will be playing college sport, girls' basketball at Bridgewater State, cross-country at UMass Lowell, soccer at Southern New Hampshire University, baseball at Hobart Williams Smith College, and swimming at Eastern Connecticut State University. A number of special award recognitions are included on the flyer. Shout-outs to a number of students, 49 specifically, receiving the Bileiteracy Award, 13 SEALs State of Bileiteracy Awards and a number of others that are captured there. College-bound, 85% of the 2025 graduating class are college-bound. The long list of students, long list of schools, I'm sorry, that they are choosing to attend, 53 specifically are highlighted here. They were accepted to 160 schools at least the time of putting this together. And you can see really a wide array of excellent institutions throughout the country. Future heroes, five students will be future teachers and educators. A pleasure to be at that signing that we had a few weeks back. Two students are enlisting in the armed forces and 11 are entering a trade industry. So there is, there's so much to be proud of. I know you join me in that for our school system and that certainly includes our college graduates for which obviously none of this would be possible without the contributions of staff, not just here at the high school, but obviously throughout our school system. So kudos to all of them. There are good things happening in Wilmington. If you are a family looking for a place to raise your children, this would be it right here. Lots of good stuff. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. I know your offices put this report together the last few years and it's such a great snapshot of the graduating class. So thank you for continuing to do that and congratulations to everybody. All right, with that said, we will move along. The next item on our agenda is public comment. We received a few submissions in advance of the meeting that are in the packet. I know the committee's had a chance to review those, but we will take a moment to open the meeting to public comment.
I've been waiting, all waiting to this.
Name and address for the record, please.
You can come sit here.
Would you like to?
I do have to say that I, this is the first meeting I've been back to and it's all I can do to like sit on my hands. If anybody, when you ask if anybody has a comment, I'm like, that's not for me anymore. But I'm, I'm here to congratulate Glenn on his newest adventure. I, I do feel it's at our loss. I think it's, I'd be remiss in saying I was here when you came into the district and it's just fitting, in my opinion anyway, that I'm here for your last meeting. It is different sitting in the wings. And I, I know that, you know, the chair won't shut me down until the five-minute mark, so. But I, I just want to, and I will, I'll see you next week, but I just want to sincerely thank you for coming into a district and getting us back on our rails, for growing and camaraderie within our staff and our district and rebuilding the trust that was lost at a difficult time. I, I'm grateful to your family for allowing you to be so committed to our district and our kids, because that's, I know, a huge sacrifice on a, on a family, especially when we talk about distance and such, and I'm so grateful. I'm grateful for you for driving us forward, not for tomorrow, but further down the road to see our schools continue to build, get strong, even at fiscal uncertainty in our budget cycle, state and federal with funding. But yeah, I'm grateful that, and it still blows my mind, but, and I know it's, you couldn't do what you did without Paul, without Christine, without other staff members with regards to putting in six SOIs during COVID, when all we could do is try to figure out how do we keep our schools open? How do we continue to educate our kids? How do we support those families who are struggling to put food on their table and in such a harrowing time without the guidance of the commissioner, who I walked out on his meeting at the last conference he spoke at? So, and, but I just want to thank you and all the evolution, I know, and thank you for the patience. Thank you for actually not only hearing us, but listening to what we had to say, our concerns and the collaboration. I mean, I never thought Paul would, would drop the WB Mason box and pick up something else to bring meeting materials to the meeting. So, you know, there are miracles in life. But I just, I don't think, and for the sake of the time, I could really articulate eloquently enough, the appreciation for the work and the drive and leadership. I know it's a team effort, but I think, and forgive me if I use passive inaction, but I think our board is stronger and is able to work at the level that it does because of the, of the collaboration and the leadership that we have to work with. And I, and I go, I mean that through all the central office team and the administrators and teachers. I know it's a collective effort and it feels like family again. And I just wanted to say thank you. I probably won't be participating after public comments, I know how much we like an audience, but, but I just sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for weathering it all with us.
Thank you, I'm J. Thank you.
Can we clap?
Other public comments? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the first item of new business, which is the Wellness Advisory Committee Report and YRBS Update with Ms. Brown and Ms. Dunham. Please join us.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want me to tee this up?
Do you want to, do you want to kick this off?
Sure, I'll tee this up. We have provided the committee, and obviously the community, with an update on this. There's a memo in the packet, Wellness Advisory Committee Report and Youth Risk Behavior Survey, or YRBS, as we have more commonly referred to it as. You'll recall that this was a source of discussion here around the school committee table a few meetings back. And the direction for the administration was to bring this item of the YRBS survey and our status as a district with this back to the Wellness Committee for further discussion. I had the privilege to attend that, as I know both Becky and Erin did, and a couple of members of our committee here, Jen and Nick. Allison Hall, a student, is also in the audience. Thanks, Allison, for being here as a student representative. Also at that meeting, as you can see, Shelley Newhouse, the Wilmington, from the Wilmington Board of Health, Christine Minahan, and Mary Palin. The highlights of that discussion are included in the memo, and it was really a wide ranging discussion that covered a number of areas that were sources of conversation here, including the survey logistics. They're outlined in the memo, including updates on changes to the health and education curriculum, a specific focus on the sexual health in the curriculum, obviously a key component of the survey, along with the definition of sexual health intercourse within the YRBS survey. And finally, the opt-out process, something that I know many members of the committee around the table stressed as something important. So, we're here to provide an update with you on the overarching plan. And both Erin and Becky are here, of course, to help insist on any questions that committee members have. The long and short, you can see, is the intent is to continue with this survey, not this school year, but in the fall of next school year. And that was an important piece that we left the last meeting at, in terms of a question around whether or not, as a participating district or a member district, there was the opportunity to do just that. That was confirmed. JSI, the consultant for the survey, has indicated very clearly that our data, our results, survey results, can be included as part of the compilation of the survey if administered in the fall. So, I'll pause there. And Erin or Becky, if I left anything out, but we can jump right in.
Sounds like a pretty good synopsis. Mr. Turner?
The last point, though, the memo says that the questions asked would be the twenty twenty three questions, correct?
Correct.
So, for clarification, it would be the prior version of the questions, not the ones that were reviewing earlier. And then there'll be opportunity to work with JSI for a future version, future revisions after that for twenty twenty six.
I think what came out in the committee meeting, Jordan Buckland, our CTO for Health and PE, I think was probably, her comments were the most important, because she has day to day interaction with our students. And from her comments, it was clear that if we're going to say we're an inclusive community, school community, then our definition of sexual intercourse has to be inclusive also. So, I think we need time with the rollout of the DESI curriculum framework. That will be solidified by the fall of next year, right, Christine? DESI gave us, gave districts time to like kind of rev up. And so, in the way the standards are set up, they're, they're not one specific grade. They're like grades six through eight, nine through twelve. But we knew, we do know, like, for the middle school, by grade eight, this has to be taught. And by the end of grade five, this is taught. So, as a committee, we feel comfortable that by the spring of twenty seven, that the curriculum as it's set now by DESI will have been taught.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate the update.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Golden?
Thank you. And thank you both for all your hard work, serving on the Wellness Committee, being at that meeting. I thought it was really productive. I have a question and a comment. So, the question is, to Mr. Turner's question about reverting to twenty twenty three, is that the whole survey or just this subsection?
I think the understanding is that we would revert back to the questions and definitions as they were written in the twenty twenty three survey.
For the whole survey?
For the sexual behavior section.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Yeah, and I wanted to kind of agree with what you were saying, Becky, about what Jordan was saying. I really liked, and I don't want to speak to, she's not here to kind of clarify, but what I gathered was, kind of getting out to the community, getting that buy-in, explaining why this is so important, if we are going to be an inclusive community, we are. I'm glad that, you know, the definition that folks learned about, that we learned about, it didn't come out of the blue, per se, but I can understand how folks felt that way. And I think that kind of getting it from this third party organization that we have worked with in the past, but again, a third party, I think it was important that we revisited our policies, slowed the roll here, took a step back, and revisited kind of why we're doing this. And again, I think the most critical thing actually is strengthening the opt-outs, reminding parents that you have this right. This is a legal right. You have to opt your children out. And one of the outcomes here as well is, future communications with the district are going to be much clearer. Subject lines are going to be really clear as to what you're looking for. But yeah, I think this is a step in the right direction that kind of meets folks where they're at.
And I just want to give a shout out to Allison, because she was at that meeting as a guest. She has committed to next year as our student rep, which I think is really important. I also think we need to, Dr. Brandon and I have discussed this, how we get one or two parents' representation. But Allison has put together, as part of her civics project, a very nice program that we can connect on our website, and when we do the opt-out messaging to our parents and guardians, that that would also be linked, which kind of gives the overview of YRBS. She did an amazing job. If we would have had more time, or at some point, we could come back, and Allison could actually share her presentation. But it is like top notch, very impressive project. And I think that was one of the things that we said at our wellness meeting. The messaging needs to be clear. The links for the questions have to be easier to get to. We have made the decision that who's ever in the role of coordinator of social emotional health will be the one person to get all the opt-outs. So, I feel like our process has always been safe. We have never had an issue with students taking it, that parents and guardians had wanted to opt out. But I think we have solidified that even more, and we are going to give even more information to parents and guardians so that they can make that decision.
I should just add that with regard to designating one person to manage opt-outs, that, of course, would be cross referenced with building administrators to make sure that we have as comprehensive of a list as possible.
And I think there was some questions about opt-out, opt-in, to be consistent with all the Massachusetts DPH mandated screening. So, vision and hearing, BMI, all of those are mandated by the state to be opt-out. So, to like then take this survey and flip it and do opt-ins, it didn't make any sense to the committee, to be consistent, that everything should be an opt-out.
Well, I was just giving Erin a thumbs up.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to take your-
Appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
I saw Dr. McCauley first, and then Mr. Turner.
Sure. So, thank you. Thanks for the update in talking about this. I have a few questions. I think first, I want to start at kind of like a high level, and then kind of drill down to a few more specifics. So, I thought the memo was really helpful to provide a lot of context. One thing I felt was missing, though, was, and it was asked last time, when you do surveys like this, what have been some really actionable things that have come out of this survey? So, from data we've gotten in the past, what programs have been implemented to address some of the data that we got in the survey in the past, and what are the positive outcomes? And the reason why I ask that is, I think with this, I'm kind of concerned the community doesn't see how this may benefit students in a clear manner, and it could be viewed as being very intrusive, right? Its intrusive use of privacy, data grab, everything like that. I think in the memo, and I saw some of the answers, which I'd like for you to share, there are some benefits with this around, I think, drug use, stuff like that, that can really help out the community at large. If we don't explain these to people, and we just kind of roll out the survey, I feel that it's going to really erode trust in the community, right? And we might lose some of this valuable information and really help the students. So, I was wondering if you can maybe share, like, some of those things where we've been doing the survey for a while, we've gotten some really good data, and then what programs have been implemented that's shown a positive impact?
So, I believe we had talked previously about how the vaping, the anti-vaping program was a direct result of YRBS data, as well as our signs of suicide program, when we were seeing sort of increases with regard to risk. And that is now a pretty embedded, you know, program in our secondary level, and has wonderful results in terms of providing some, you know, really good sort of prevention methods, how to access a trusted adult in the building, really helping our students identify who a trusted adult in the building might be, as well as if they can identify someone, then making sure that that student has, you know, extra support. So, I think there's been tremendous value in that respect. I think also past surveys have also indicated that we do have a population of students of the LGBTQIA+ community who are not so much feeling very included. And so, we want to make sure that we have more opportunities to make sure that they have the support and resources that they need as well. So, just to highlight a few, yeah.
And I think not all the information leads to a program. Erin and I were talking that if we see that our students are saying they're sexually active, but then we say, are you using contraceptives? And they say, no. That's a valuable piece of information to share out with our health teachers. So, not everything becomes the MARK program, or the signs of suicide, or PBIS, but it's valuable information to share out to our teachers who are teaching the curriculum.
Okay. Yeah, that may be important when this rolls out in the fall, to really explain how this can link to a lot of outcomes. Could be programs, could be curriculum changes, anything like that, right? Because honestly, like, when I saw this, it was like, okay, here's, here is this survey. Well, we fill this out, and then what? What happens with that? What's the purpose of it, right?
I mean, if our kids are saying they're getting in the car and they're not wearing seat belts, we got to kind of go back and say, what's, like, why aren't you wearing seat, like, it's not, you know, I don't-
Yeah. And then, so then to kind of drill down a little bit further, there were some questions around some of the sexual, like, behavior ones, right? So, I found in the memo, Ms. Buckland's background on the sex ed curriculum to be very helpful in the district. So, one thing I was wondering is, so, it was written in the memo just for the benefit of the community, and this will be public. So, everyone by fifth grade will have a high level knowledge of sexual intercourse and how that works, right? But then, the way I read the memo was that for use of contraceptives and everything, all those other behaviors, that won't be taught until eighth grade, and that's kind of a-
So, by the end of eighth grade. So, like, the curriculum is set up, and we have one health teacher at the middle school. So, the curriculum goes across those three grades. But by the end of eighth grade, the standards that are for eighth grade have been taught. It might have been taught in sixth grade. It might have been taught in seventh grade. It's, not every student at the middle school gets it at the same point.
Yeah. So-
In the same way, like, when they get into ninth and tenth.
Okay. So, thank you for that. So, one thing I'm kind of struggling with is, the questions are not given to sixth graders, but they are given to seventh and eighth graders, but not all the seventh and eighth graders would have that education, right? So, this could be new to them. So, that's something that I kind of struggle with, is if we're giving it to the students and they haven't all received this education, it could be kind of like the first time they're seeing some of this, right?
But the actual sexual intercourse has been taught by the end of fifth grade?
So, agreed on that. I think it was about all the other questions that were being asked, too. So, about like contraceptives and everything like, like that in those questions. Agreed that by fifth grade, all the students will have that basic sex ed curriculum. So, and then, you know, the last thing, too, is, you know, I think, I applaud the efforts to be inclusive and everything like that. What I am concerned about is, even when you look at the twenty twenty three question, though, there is still a lot of detail around this. And I think that was a lot of the feedback we got from the community, is like, why does it, we need so much detail around these questions? Like, why can't it be a high level?
Because the feeling was, if we don't provide a definition, then when the students answer, are we going to have accurate information back?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
So, I had two things, and the second, the second one was on the value of YRBS. I think those of us in the room, and certainly those in your professions, understand how important it is to have a really good understanding of the students and all the things that go on, that could impact, and then, at the end of the day, impact them as healthy students, but all the way through to the education. And that if students are depressed, it impacts education. If students are having risky behaviors, it can impact education. And so, tying it to that piece, I really do think it's important for parents to see that value. And I think to some of us, it's almost self-evident, but for somebody who isn't, doesn't have your professional background, helping them really understand, we learned this, we saw this, we saw a trend, and we wanted to make sure we had a positive impact. So, I do think that's a really important thing. And it's almost, the more we can talk about, the good it does, the more the understanding of the value of the survey, and the less opt-outs there'll be, the more buy-in there'll be. And then they'll, just a small question, if I've spoken with a parent who potentially is interested in joining the Wellness Committee as a parent, who would they get in touch with?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Ragsale?
So, I wanted to thank you guys for all the really thoughtful work that went into this follow-up. I know that we had a challenging meeting the last time that we discussed this, and there was, you know, a difficult charge given to the Wellness Committee to incorporate all that kind of feedback and come back. And so, thanks for these, for these really thoughtful recommendations. I am definitely pleased to see the thoroughness with which a lot of my original concerns about the communication procedures and the opt-out process and the transparency, in terms of even just knowing what this email is, and who it's from, and where to find the information on the website, that that's all been really, really explicitly addressed. And I think, to me, that was my most, my most important concerns. I do want to tag on a little bit to what Mr. McCauley was saying about making sure that it's clear to the community the value of these questions, and the importance you gave, you know, an example of, oh, if we know that their students are having sexual intercourse, but they're not using contraception, then this is something, that's data we can take to the health classes and put different emphasis on things, like if something is not getting through. And I think that we need to, to have answers like that for, I don't know that necessarily, like, every last single question that there's a, and here's how we'll use this information. But generally speaking, especially, of course, on the, you know, the sexual behavior questions, that we really do need to have solid answers about, you know, what can we do with this information? Like, you know, why is this question being asked? You know, if this many students, you know, answered yes or no, or whatever the percentage is, what does that tell us that we then get some kind of actionable information from? Because without that, without that sense of, here is our explanation, or here's, you know, without being able to explain what the benefit is for knowing this information, then it's going to be, you know, harder, of course, for people to not just feel that this is, you know, intrusive, and we want people to feel that there's value in the survey. So, I think that's something else to be working on towards the fall. So, if we, you know, if we go forward and administer this in the fall, that I think we want to have, like, a really good set of explanations of just like, here is why these questions are asked, and here is the benefit of knowing this information, and the sort of the concrete ways that we can apply this in, you know, in our kids' education.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsale. Ms. Lord?
I just wanted to echo some of the thoughts. But I guess one of the key thoughts I had also was, if it's possible for things to be, the survey looked at, so that we look at what's being taught when, and then aligning what's being asked in the survey after it's been introduced. But I'm curious if we're considering giving it in the fall. That would, so our, that's earlier in the school year for students. So, seventh graders in the fall would have been this year's spring sixth graders. So, would, which version would they be taking? Because it could be before they're being, you know, taught. I'm just curious if you've thought about that.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, we're going to lose like a whole, we would, because we won't go back until the spring of twenty seven. And I, the committee felt really strongly we didn't want to do that. So, we may capture some students who haven't had any exposure to the materi, I mean, the sexual intercourse, they would have had, because even though the curriculum is new, it's not completely new. It was kind of realigned, the standards were realigned, but it's not like we didn't have any curriculum in the public school systems, and now all of a sudden, we do. It was more realigning it. So, I mean, we feel comfortable that the sexual intercourse questions for grade seven, the material has been covered. It may be more well organized with the new curriculum, but it shouldn't be that no student has, in seventh grade, has had any exposure at all.
And again, I think it's noteworthy, and I believe we spoke about this last time as well, is not all sections of the survey relate back to lessons being taught in the public school. So, there's, there's a lot of content in that survey. And again, not all of it relates back to sort of a class lesson. But I understand sort of what, timeframe wise, what that, what that means for the students that would be taking it, yeah.
And just my other, I guess, question was, if there's a version for sixth grade that doesn't have sexual behavior, is that, I don't know if it's possible, but it seems like if that's an option, could that be an option for parents to opt, in the opt-out? like if that's an option, could that be an option for parents to opt in the opt out to have a choice? It's just not, you can't do that.
Unfortunately, you wouldn't be able to simply opt out of a section. As a, as a survey participant, you can choose to take to answer any question you want. You can choose to skip a question, you can, so that that's a choice in that in that process in real time. But you wouldn't be able to strictly opt out of.
And a parent could sit down with their student and go through the questions and before they sat down and took it themselves. So if they're sitting down with their student and they don't feel comfortable when they actually sit down themselves, they could just skip whatever section they didn't want to answer.
Thank you. I know I'll echo what Mr. Exel said. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Can you talk to me, Erin, maybe this is for you, a little bit more about the thoughts around the opt out process and how that's going to work with sort of the building staff, right? I know one person is going to sort of receive these, coordinate these. You know, and I know part of the the concern previously was around the incident that happened in Burlington where opt outs weren't, you know, registered or recognized or whatever the word is. So, you know, I want to, I guess my one sort of hang up is making sure that, and I know when we talked in the fall with a earlier in the spring, that our opt outs had been sort of in line with what we had seen previously. But making sure that that's being, those opt outs are being communicated to the building staff, to the classroom teachers. And in giving parents, I think, maybe, I don't know if it's multiple reminder emails, I just want to make sure that folks are getting the information that they need, right? So maybe you could just talk through that process a little bit more.
So what what occurred this year? So we had two buildings that sent out messaging with regard to the survey and what the opt out procedure is. Each building sort of had their own identified person to manage those opt outs. Because my name and contact information is a part of that information that's being sent out and frequently asked questions and all of that, there were also opt outs that I received directly. So you have sort of a building and myself sort of receiving opt outs. We cross referenced at every point what, who, you know, who was added to that list? What does that list look like? I sat down specifically with the middle school again and we went through because some parents brought in paper copies of an opt out. So we had, you know, we were receiving information in a couple of different formats and really made sure that we were going through pretty, you know, extensively to make sure that people were, we were honoring, you know, what what people felt was most important to them. I think what we're proposing again is, is how do we streamline that and have sort of one person, again, recognizing that if a parent came in and had a, you know, a printed piece of paper and said, here's my opt out, then of course we would honor that. We just need to make sure that it's being integrated into what that master list looks like. I think we also talked about sort of thinking about would we, would we offer sort of something more electronic like a Google form? Would we make that look similar to how we're, how how parents are opting out of sort of different aspects of sort of the sexual health curriculum? So I think we have a lot of really good ideas. And I think it's just figuring out which is the one that's going to make the most sense, you know, as 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 we move forward with this process. So I feel really confident that this is something that we can manage, nor do I recall that there ever being an issue of individuals, you know, opting out and not that not being honored at the time, you know, of the survey. And that extends to making sure that we have, you know, a place for our students who are opting out to go, that we make sure that, you know, classroom teachers or, you know, whoever is is going to be managing that piece is very well aware of what the process looks like. And again, if there's a way that whoever is in that role is able to sort of insert themselves and make sure that there's some monitoring of that, I I would like to make sure that happens as well.
That's helpful. Thank you. Other questions, Dr. Brison?
I'll just have, I'm not going to repeat. I am not going to repeat what everyone said. But I I do think my colleagues have really eloquently sort of summed up, I think, what most of us are feeling. I thank you for this kind of revision of this. I sat in on that meeting with Mr. Golden and it was very, very helpful to be in that space, which brings me to that point that I've made a couple of times about including families, which you've said, having a couple of representatives. And to Dr. McCalli's point about making this a little bit more visible for families so that they understand why are we doing this? What has it contributed to assessing health risks that's going to keep my child safe and prevent future problem? Like, I think in some ways, simplifying it, but also providing more access for families will be really, really helpful. So I think just having sat in that space for us, walking out feeling like, oh, okay, I feel like I understand this a little bit better now, was was great. And having Jordan there, I also think was a real asset, as well as Ally, as well as the student rep. So so thank you for taking that feedback and for providing us with this update. And I'm feeling pretty comfortable about it as it stands for the fall.
And I think in general, for the wellness committee, to have parent representation is important, not, you know, we, as a committee, you've received questions about the lunches and what's served. And so I think it's important to have parents on all three of our topics that are made to one, social, emotional, health and PE and food and nutrition, to have parent representation and obviously to have a student rep is going to be really good.
I don't know if this is an appropriate time to make a suggestion, but knowing that or understanding through the recommendations here that if this is moving forward, that the idea would be to use the 2023 version rather than the 2025 version. I think it would be great if we could get that survey on the district website, if it's not already, and shared with families even at the end of this school year so they're sort of able to digest that, know what's in it, know what's coming. I think that would be a helpful first step if that makes sense.
And I definitely want to link Allison's work.
Yeah, great, for sure. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to also add a point. The wellness subcommittee meetings, excuse me, goodness, are public. And you can find them all on the school website, their agendas, school meeting, there are the meeting times for the subcommittee, et cetera. And I, again, I just reiterate, I really hope Jordan, I think Jordan mentioned, getting out to the community and kind of socializing this and and really getting that buy in and answering a lot of questions. And it's like, why does this all this matter? Why does updating our our sex ed, you know, curriculum to this modern standard, this DESI standard matter? I think that's going to be really critical ahead of 2027. So and oh, one more thing. I also wanted to say, I think Becky, you mentioned that, or Erin, one of the two you mentioned, that to this date, we haven't had a problem with the opt outs. So I just wanted to say, good job.
And YRBS is not the only thing that parents opt out on. I mean, across all the mandated screenings and we have not had, thankfully.
Thank you.
No, I was going to say, this is not a motion and vote by the committee. This is a sort of a sense of the committee path moving forward.
Yes, yeah, a couple of things, but yeah, the the it's it's my recommendation that this would be a sense of the committee. There's not a a policy that I see right now that you have as a governing body to approve this kind of thing, this kind of survey, rather that is. But clearly with the depth and breadth of conversation, as I said before, last time we talked, this is not a survey that we must do. We want to proceed because we think it's valuable, we think it's appropriate and the right thing to do, but we don't have to do this survey. So we've, you know, we've, we've thought a lot about the feedback and and understanding that this has been in on people's minds. And so we're here to get a sense of the committee based upon this plan and how to proceed. So it wouldn't be my recommendation for you to vote. But I think, this is the other thing that I've been thinking a lot about this, and it's it's something that, not just for this committee, but I think all committees and all districts are going to continue to grapple with. You know, we're given this charge to try to tend to the overall health and wellbeing of our students. And first and foremost, right, is of course the focus on teaching and learning. But there are, no one can refute the fact that there's broader expectations around how can we make sure that there's appropriate programming for the health and wellbeing of students? And when you get into these areas where we're in this, as in this particular case, trying to gather information that we think would be helpful, I I've been thinking about this more than I think questions that all of us that sit in these kind of seats have to answer, and that is, you know, why are we doing this? But similarly, why why might we not do this? And I and I suspect that there have been people who have asked that question, what why are we doing this survey? But I also suspect that there would be people in this particular case with the YRBS survey that is a shared sort of approach amongst counterparts nearby. And I've been thinking about this, that, you know, as this report, and it will, it will come out as it has in the past with participating communities in a comprehensive report. And and if we weren't a part of that data catchment on this particular measure, you know, I think to me, I've been thinking about, well, would the question be asked, why aren't we? And I just think that that's as we come across more other, it's not just the YRBS survey, and I know that there's more sensitivity to some of the topics here, but I think that that becomes more difficult for all of you as a governing body and for us, you know, in these seats to manage when these questions of why, why are we doing something or why aren't we doing something, especially as it relates to some of these topics? So I think that the wellness committee's engagement, certainly as has been the case in this, but broadening it to include parent guardian representatives and student representatives is the right move to go. I think what comes out of these kind of things in the future may still be things that not everyone's on board with. And then that becomes, you know, these conversations around this table, around how to proceed. At the end of the day, we want to do something that the committee is supportive of, and ultimately that brings us to where we're at tonight with this topic.
Thank you, Dr. Brandon.
So just for clarification, the plan would be that we would remove the 25 questions off the website, we would put the 23 ones up, we would link Allison's presentation to provide information about YRBS. And then in the fall, after school gets up and running and, you know, the the first two or three weeks of adjusting to, that then Erin and I would meet with Mr. Kyra and Mr. Jenrin to look at dates of when we would go forward with the survey.
Dr. McCalli.
I just want to bring up something that Ms. Lord brought brought up. I I do share her concern that seventh graders that are actually sixth graders right now will be taking the survey when they wouldn't. And we're only talking about like a month or two difference. So we may want to restrict this to just eighth graders.
I just commenting on that, you know, because the sixth graders are going to take it though, but without that section, right? So to do the same thing that parents probably had the understanding that it would be, would be my thought on that, so not not to take it away from them completely, but to do this, that same version, but the 2023 or what, if that matters, I'm not sure if it does.
So the seventh graders would take the sixth grade version?
So the suggestion, not to put words in your mouth, the suggestion would essentially be for the survey to go out in the fall, but for the sixth and seventh grade classes next year to take the essentially the sixth grade version.
Yeah.
Dr. Brison.
So I would just say to that, I would send that back to the wellness committee. That's a suggestion. I would send it back to the wellness committee and have them kind of think on that and then bring us, bring back to us their suggestion and their recommendation. I just don't think it makes sense. I don't think, I don't feel that we're in a position to make those sorts of changes. I think that it it sits in that committee and then we can certainly at that point vote, but I don't think we should be making those sorts of things. So if we're if we're concerned, and I hear you, it goes back, you think about that, have a meeting with the committee and then say, okay, we've talked about it, here's our, kind of like you did tonight. We went through it, we talked with, here's what we're recommending to you. And then I think from there, if we're still not in agreement, then then we do, you try and make, you can make a motion and we can kind of see where it goes from there. But I'd rather not get into that now and sort of have people not in consensus. So I think sending it back to the experts might be helpful.
For that one, just to be clear, for just for that one topic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I it sounds like there's a more or less a consensus on the recommendations with the exception of perhaps that grade level tweak, so.
I mean, the other thing is we can go back to Jordan to see exactly before the realignment of the new DESI curriculum, how like, how did it, how was it taught?
Yeah, that's my other suggestion. I think going back to my questions around why we have the descriptions of things in there, is it aligned with the curriculum that the kids are taught? Is it appropriate or not? Because the other thing that's a core concern is these things are coming out before they're taught.
But again, to Erin's point, not everything in this survey is necessarily something that is taught. So I, so I, so I hear, I I'm sort of like, ooh, that makes sense. I'm not disagreeing, but I'm just saying there's more to this than I think we we may understand. And so I just want to kind of, I would shift it back, but I hear you. But I think that we want to be careful about saying everything in that survey is something that's covered by frameworks, because it's not. And that's just not how it is.
Like, I'll go on public record to say that the use of toys is not taught, but it was included because of the importance of our student population to be.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's time before it, this would be administered. So I think there's time for them to do that.
We'll kick back off in late August anyways, so, okay.
And hopefully by our first, Dr. Brandon and I had talked that we would ask the building principals to message out early in the school year, looking for parent representation if you have someone that could certainly. So hopefully by our first committee meeting, we would have some parents.
Do we have a thought on early fall? Is that like October kind of timeframe? Is that what we're?
Yeah. I think we would need to be thoughtful about timeframes also for our panorama surveys also occur mid-October. So we would just want to make sure that we're, again, being being mindful of timing.
So happy with most of the recommendations, looking for a little bit more information from the wellness committee, sort of late summer, early fall.
Okay.
Thank you very much. This is super helpful.
Erin, you're next. So if you want to just get comfortable. And we can move to the bullying prevention and intervention plan. Becky, thank you.
Thank you very much. Bye, MJ, thank you.
Good night, MJ. Thank you. Dr. Brandon, do you want to kick this one off?
Sure. Item C is, sorry, item B, the bullying prevention intervention plan. And certainly, Ms. Elliott, Ms. Dunham can chime in here, but you have, you have a memo in your packet that provides an update on where we're at as a district, an obligation every couple of years to update our bullying prevention and intervention plan, otherwise, yet another acronym we know, BPIP. And you can see an update there that brings us to where we where we are right now. So Erin, I'll turn over to you. Do you want to add to that?
Absolutely. So just as you shared, every two years, we are required to review and update our bullying prevention and intervention plan. The Behavioral Health Task Force, or the BHTF, is who really spent a considerable amount of time reviewing the plan, making, you know, recommendations and edits. You know, I I feel really positive in saying that there was very few sort of edits that needed to be made. Really, we eliminated sort of more historical information from 2018 to 2021. We did add, you know, a sentence or two as it relates to sort of the, you know, new IEP. Also changed, again, a little bit of language and sort of, you know, grammar or typos. So nothing, nothing terribly significant. We did put the revised plan out for public comment. Again, and from what I could see from previous years, where there was a review of this document, that there was just a few comments with regard to just making sure that there's good communication with parents and caregivers and just the importance of staff training.
Thank you. Questions, comments, observations? Dr. McCalli.
Thanks. So I have a few questions, kind of more higher level. So first one was, were there any themes from the public comment this year that could be shared with the committee?
Again, it was sort of more comments about sort of what is the nature of staff training and is there more staff training? And then just there being sort of good communication with regard to the process if allegations are brought forward and what that communication looks like with parents and caregivers through that process.
Great, thank you. And then taking a step back, how is the policy performing for the district? So we have this great policy written down, but how is, how has it been working? I know it's been really worked on intensely the past few years. I know it's been really worked on intensely the past few years, you know, has there been any reduction in bullying behavior, or increase in resolutions, or quickness in resolutions, anything like that?
Yep, so I would be, I would caution sort of giving any sort of updates about, you know, what the number of, you know, allegations have been for the year, because we're still, we're still wrapping up the year. What I will say is that, from what I can glean, it does look like there has been a decrease at the middle school level, and so I'm really excited and kind of curious to understand a bit more about why that is, and what feels different. But as far as sort of trends, I feel it might be a little too premature to sort of compare the two years.
Okay, that's promising anecdote about the middle school, that's great. And then my last question is, you know, policies are written, best intentions, but sometimes you get a serious case that kind of no one could anticipated and everything. So were there any like learnings from these that could be gathered and fed back to the policy, and if so, like, you know, no specifics, but at a high level, what are those learnings?
I suppose, and as someone that has, you know, carried out some of the investigations this year, and has supported some of our building sort of designees and administrators with regard to the investigations, I, I suppose the learning is, there's always something to learn, and I think it really does sort of kind of come back to what is our, sort of, our bullying curriculum at every level, what can we do to support that, how do we better align that with our PBIS initiatives as well? And, you know, I think again, sort of staff training being, you know, really crucial sort of piece to that, and there will be a component of sort of the new, the new staff orientation that will be now dedicated to doing an overview of what our bullying curriculum sort of looks like at each level.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Mr. Turner.
Quick one, excuse me. We have this in place, and it looks really, really good on paper, but particularly focusing on the prevention side, I hear we have some surveys, are we getting good information out of our surveys to say that we're successful with preventing, so with students, in terms of how they're reporting in the surveys, I've been a victim of, does that tie to what we see in the actual cases we review, and are we seeing an increase or a decrease in the students who feel like they've been, or not feel like, who have been impacted by bullying? Are we seeing trends in the data we're getting out of some of our surveys that reflect that the prevention work is working? Or do we see things in that that says, okay, we're doing all this work, but we're not seeing a change there, do we need to change what we're doing in terms of the curriculum for prevention? Is there a way to link between those two different topics?
Right, so there is a section in the YRBS that relates to bullying, and I certainly will be curious if we're able to administer the survey in the fall, what that data looks like, and how to compare that with 2023. Again, I think it's really sort of thinking about how are we, how are we aligning the current initiatives we have to support our students in as preventative, preventative a way as possible? And so that's, that's really, that feels like the direction, I think, that we'll go in.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Other questions or comments?
It's an easy one. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you, Erin.
All right, our last item of new business this evening is the superintendent evaluation report. Members of the committee will recall that at our most recent meeting, Dr. Brandon walked us through his accomplishments to this point in the school year. It was intended to be the first, first year of a two-year evaluation, but as we've noted, Dr. Brandon will be leaving us at the end of the school year, so the evaluation is essentially an abridged version of our comments and feedback and appreciation for all the work that Dr. Brandon has done this year. Certainly not an attempt to minimize all the work that's been done, but I think it, sufficient to say that the committee as a whole gave Dr. Brandon high marks, and I thought one comment from one of our colleagues was sort of particularly impactful, and so I will read that. But throughout the year, Dr. Brandon has demonstrated exceptional leadership by balancing short and long-term priorities, fostering strong relationships with faculty, students, families, the school committee, and the wider community. Amidst challenges, he's remained a steady and optimistic presence, committed to continuous improvement and academic excellence across the district. Dr. Brandon has been an exemplary leader for Wilmington Public Schools for the past seven years. We're deeply grateful for all that he has contributed to our district, he will be missed. So, Dr. Brandon, you did a great job this year, the committee has given you high marks in your review, but I certainly don't want to hog this, so if anybody has anything additional to add.
Or you don't have to say anything.
Or you don't have to say anything. Mr. Agsill.
I do feel that we should probably announce the official formal ratings that we gave Dr. Brandon for, for his goals and for the instructional areas.
You want to do that?
Sure, I have to.
Yeah, please.
So, Dr. Brandon had four goals for this year, and so the first goal was related to district communication processes, and the committee rated that Dr. Brandon met this goal. The second goal was, what was this, this was the building safety, so this was the safety audit and tabletop exercise and so forth, and this also, the committee rated Dr. Brandon as having met this goal. School improvement goal number three, this was his role as both a superintendent and chair of the school building committee, so his work on the MSBA project, and in this goal, the committee rated him as having exceeded his goal, and again, we are deeply appreciative of all the work that you've put in, not just this year, but of course, over the past multiple years on this important project. And then for student learning goal one, so the fourth goal, this was focused on the middle school, again, continued middle school improvement and the program review, and additional work on scheduling and curriculum progress, and we rated Dr. Brandon as having met that goal. And then, let's see, getting to, those are the goals again. And then overall, the committee rated Dr. Brandon as proficient, it is important to recognize, as the rubric states, that this is a high standard of review, the expected standard of excellence. And so sometimes proficient just sounds like, well, you kind of did okay, and that's not what proficient means in the superintendent evaluation rubric, that it is a high level of, of performance, and we rank Dr. Brandon proficient.
Thank you, Mr. Agsill, that was an important addition. Members of the committee, hearing none, Dr. Brandon, any comments on your evaluation?
Thank you for what I know is another task that you were asked to do, you're required to do, I appreciate the feedback and the thoughtfulness that you certainly, I know, placed into this and put into all of the tasks that you're assigned, so I thank you, I thank you for the time and the reflection on it.
Thank you. Diverting very slightly from our agenda, we have a guest from the Finance Committee, Mr. Neville, wanted to make a few comments, so, thanks for joining us late, good evening, welcome.
Thank you for having me, I'm actually not here on behalf of the Finance Committee tonight, I'm here on behalf of the PAWS group.
Thank you.
But, you know, from the entire group, we just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Brandon for all of his years of service in the community, his willingness to collaborate with our group has made a huge impact on what we've been able to do, you know, he always enthusiastic with our ideas, willing to share his own, always responding to our communications thoughtfully and quickly and timely fashion, willing to set up meetings with us, you know, we would ask him for something and say, hey, can we set up a meeting and talk about this? And he was always, you know, open to that idea, and joining us for our events. That has been a huge impact, it's been a draw for us to get people in, and we really just want to say thank you so much, it's a big loss to the community to be losing you, but, you know, congratulations if people are getting you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I know you appreciate all the attention. A procedural question, maybe for the committee, but I don't recall in the past, have we voted to accept the superintendent's evaluation, or is it just a, I don't think so, right?
Just a presentation of it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you. All right, moving on, we're going to go to old business, we're going to start with the Summer Enrichment Program enrollment update, Dr. Brandon and/or Ms. Elliott.
I can take this one, you've had enough spotlight.
Thanks, Ms. Elliott.
In your packet tonight, there's a memo from Mr. Hackett and Mr. Jones, who are the high school summer school co-directors, and tonight, in this packet is just an update around the enrichment program that is running, this will be our third year running it, and we are right on track with having six courses that are currently confirmed to run, with a total of 67 seats currently filled, and in the packet you can see the specific registration data, last year, so we're on track to match our enrollment for last year, and in our first year, we only had 20 seats filled, so this is a big improvement with already currently having 67, and last year, we ran with 78 students enrolled, so you can see the diverse range of students who are participating, but also, if you scroll to the second page, you'll see the summer theater camp is the huge draw, which we knew would be, we're so glad we're able to make that happen, and our tech programs are still, are really the popular programs with robotic, robotics, and Python programming, and CAD, et cetera. So enrollment is still open for these, we are scheduled to run the programs starting June 23rd through July 17th, so enrollment is still open and on the website, and people can, can check the, there's all that information is posted, so.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
So two things, one, thank you very much for the update, the theater camp being a three-week camp, being run not just with staff, but also with student volunteers and support, there's a great number of high school students involved in that as well, which is a fantastic leadership opportunity for them, I, it's a, between the robotics and that, it's a great summer program, we've got started, and it is growing every year. I do have a strong request with the etiquette for every day.
They've heard it, multiple times.
If we named it something like Win Friends, Influence People, and Make Money, you might have 25 people sign up for that one, I think the class content is great, I just think there's a bit of marketing, and anyone who's not as old as I am writing it would be great, somebody younger, make it into an Instagram post, whatever you need to do, I think it's the type of class kids would actually like to take, just with a little bit of different marketing, or something a bit more hip.
It's definitely something that, maybe we could get our town manager now, to help with that, but no, definitely something we can look at for next year, because I think, you know, that's, that's been mentioned several times, and there's so, the majority of the content of what they were hoping to offer, like you said, would be fantastic, so a little rebranding and repackaging might be a good idea to build some capacity there, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Golden, please.
Thank you, I, I have a joke, I'm going to leave it alone, the, so in this document here, it says, other, please specify on next, next question, I think, for where did you hear about this from, and it's the second largest response is other, so do you have any color as to that?
I don't actually, but I can find out, but just to highlight, because I did skip over that, so we do find that the principal newsletter is where most of the families are getting this information, and then other, so I will follow up on that. What's that? Oh, they rewrite it in a different way.
Gotcha.
But in case it's anything that's, that we should know, we should, I'll dig into that.
Thank you, thank you very much, and speaking of our town manager, it should be How to Riz Friends and Influence Neighbors, but besides that, we should ask the town to share this on their, their channels, the town page is a really great avenue, I think, for getting the folks involved in town, letting them know, like, important notices, I think this is the kind of thing that would be really useful for them to share, if there's a Facebook presence that the district has that I haven't noticed, it'd be great for that to also be an avenue for this type of programming. I really wish my daughter were old enough to take Thrill of the Grill and VVQ Basics, so that then I could taste the delicious barbecue, so, thank you.
It does raise a question, Ms. Elliott, if I could, and you may not know the answer, it does say Town Cryer Newspaper, I wonder if that also includes the Wilmington Apple, because I know a lot of people get it from there, which I assume it does, but if not, we may want to consider that for next year.
Yeah, that's true, I can follow up on that as well.
Mr. Agsill, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I wanted to just follow up on Mr. Turner's comment about the summer theater camp, that, about all the high school students who are involved, so you can see like 35 students enrolled, I believe there are 19 high school students who are going to be helping to run the camp, so those, those kids are going to get a lot of personal attention, have basically a two-to-one ratio of the helper staff to the students themselves.
And I would just add as well, we have an opportunity where the booster group for the theater program will have an opportunity to do concessions and things during this event now, so that there'll be fundraising for that program, which will be another great opportunity, and again, it just builds the program from the younger grades going up, so it should be a great show.
I was going to echo what Mr. Golden said, from a parent perspective, I feel like it would be great if there was a spot maybe on the town page with all the camps, I'm thinking the athletics camps, the academic, because I know for myself, I'm like, wait, was there an email, where is that registration, you know, I mean, if there was one place we could find that, that might be helpful.
Great, good feedback. Hearing nothing else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Elliott, moving on to old business, item number two, the permanent superintendent search update, I think that's with Dr. Brison and myself, the members of the committee will recall that over the past few meetings, we had information and/or presentations from three different search firms, HYA, MASC, and NESDEC for, a search firm for our permanent superintendent search, so we are going to be looking for a motion and a decision on a search firm tonight, so I don't know if you want to add anything to that, or?
No, I think it's just, we'll open this up, just as a reminder, the, the cost is listed in each of those reviews, or at whatever they are, applicant proposals, thank you, and I'll just quickly sum up, so MASC is offering at $11,500, NESDEC was $16,660, and HYA was $33,770. NESDEC was not here in person, as you'll recall, but did send a video. HYA was here in person, but it was not necessarily the consultant we would have, and so I believe Monica Brown, yes, Monica Brown sent the video, but it looks like due to the, how the, where they both live, it seemed like they would actually both be consulting with us, because they were both coming from out of state. And MASC, it would be the consult, so Glenn would be supporting, gosh, Alicia, right, Alicia would be our direct consultant, and one who would really help us organize, so I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you just want to kind of tell us what you're thinking and what your thoughts are, and then I'm hoping we can choose one this evening, if not, we can come to consensus, and we can certainly kind of bump that to a retreat, but the sooner we get, the sooner we do this, the better.
And I, and I think, just briefly important to note, NESDEC was the firm that did the interim superintendent search for, as a reminder, so, Mr. Turner?
And Dr. Brandon's original search in 2017.
Point of clarification on budget, do we have, I, do we have any concerns, I personally have a preference on which firm, but do we have any concerns on the, on the proposals in terms of budget impact? One of them particularly is a bit higher than the others, would, is there a challenge with even the largest of the three?
We'll direct that question to Paul, I won't put words in his mouth, but I imagine he'll say something like, we'll find the money. Paul, do we have any concerns?
There is no budget for this, given the timing of what happened, we'll.
Okay, thank, I presume so, but I wanted to at least hear from you, because it's important to connect that dot as well. And then I can speak further?
Yeah, please.
I, I, in terms of positive things, I strongly, I personally believe that MASC offers the best combination of services, familiarity with the district, and quality of representatives that they be able to provide, and it happens to be the cheapest of the options, but even if it weren't, I would, I would prefer it over the others personally. HYA in particular, not having done but one search in Massachusetts, I find it odd that they aren't the cheapest of them, trying to get their way into the market, from a business perspective, it's very odd to be the newcomer and price yourself the highest. I appreciate their, their thought process on how they might go and recruit candidates, but I believe that between the other firms would also do the right work for helping us find the right us find the right candidates. I felt with HYA, we'd have to kind of be training them on how it works in Massachusetts. So I'm not interested in that work for us. That's more than we need to do. But the other two are good. I just happen to personally prefer the services we would get and the team we would get from MASC.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Golden?
Thank you. Yeah, I, so on HYA, I really enjoyed their kind of different perspective on New England, on the fact that they, it is a, to some degree, an issue that they don't have, they've only done the one search in the Commonwealth here. But honestly, I really keep coming back to this idea of it's really important to have a fresh set of eyes, or at least I think so, to the entire ecosystem of education in the Commonwealth, how we think of things, that can find candidates, can be really kind of thinking about things in a third way or a new perspective. That said, the cost is rather high. So I find myself in agreement with Mr. Turner, that I like MASC for the holistic package of benefits they can provide to us, not, not, I wish I could say it more clearly, including especially, I think, we have a decent degree of familiarity with them, and they have a strong degree of familiarity with our district and with us. So I support that as a pick.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Mr. Ragsdale, Dr. McColl.
So I think that, I think HYA is a very impressive search firm, but I think that what they offer is not what we need. And so, again, reading through their whole proposal, just wow, that's really, really good stuff in here. And I think if we were, you know, a fifty thousand student district, you know, operating thirty schools, and, you know, that might be kind of a different, a different type of situation. But I think that as much as I liked the consultant who came and presented to us, and again, was very impressed by a lot of their offerings, I think that we are not a good fit for them, and they are not a good fit for us. So regarding NESDEC and MASC, I don't have a hundred percent opinion on that. I mean, I think that we had a really great experience with NESDEC doing our last permanent full-time superintendent search. Of course, the, you know, the person specifically who did that, Dr. Bettencourt, is no longer there. MASC, you know, we have a lot of familiarity with, because of course, we interact with them and use them for so many things, which I, to me, has a little bit of a plus and a minus, because I do think that there's the aspect of familiarity, and, you know, they certainly know Massachusetts districts and school committees, but they also have a lot on their plate, and a lot of other types of responsibilities. You know, most of what they're there for is the general district services that they provide, and then they kind of, you know, all right, they have the superintendent search service on the side. NESDEC is really more focused on executive search, like that is their bread and butter. That is what they're, you know, there to do. And they also, of course, do have some other things, executive coaching, but that's really like the main thing that they're doing. So I have just like, maybe like a little bit of a, I don't even want to quite say it a concern, but just something that I'm thinking about in terms of having kind of the full attention and focus of the people conducting the search. I think there might be a small difference there between the two firms. I'll just stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Other, Dr. McCollie?
Yep, sure. So, thanks. So I guess I'll start with HYA. I actually liked their proposal the best. I thought the service they offered and everything. One thing I really liked about them, which I didn't quite get from the other two firms, was how they do active recruitment. I'm really concerned about the other two. It's very passive. And like, in my line of work, when you need to hire someone who's at an executive level, you're not going to get your best candidates passively. You have to go out and find them, because your best candidates are actually working the job right now. And then if we're just waiting on people to apply, that means they're disgruntled, you know, they might be on the outs with the town and everything, so I'm a little concerned about who we're gonna get. We might get someone great, but to me, that's a little bit of a risk. One thing I would suggest is if we, people do like HYA, but they're concerned about the costs, can we negotiate? We have three quotes. And we can say, hey, you gotta meet us somewhere if we want to work with you, right? You know, I do also share a lot of Mr. Ragsdale's concerns with Massey as well, too. You know, I think NESDEC being a dedicated search firm could be, you know, value-added. Massey, I'm sure, could do a good job, but, you know, I don't think it's like their core offering and all that. So, yeah, for those reasons, you know, if it comes to a search firm, if cost was no option, I actually would prefer HYA, understanding no Massachusetts experience. They'll have to learn the ropes on that, for sure. But they might have a good reach, active recruitment. We might get someone in Mass or out of Mass who can be, you know, an amazing superintendent, potentially, and get good candidate flow.
Thank you.
To follow up to that point, I wouldn't have a concern with HYA if they did two things. One, if they were significantly less than the others. If they were seventy-five hundred, they have to be cheaper, because they don't have the experience. And they'd need to hire somebody who actually understands Massachusetts as a consultant. It doesn't even, they don't have to have a full-time person. They literally don't know the laws, and that could get us in trouble. We need to be careful about this and follow the right procedures. And it frankly stunned me that he didn't know that we wouldn't all be sitting in on a screening committee. That's the first question they need to ask, is understanding the screening process, and they don't understand that. I agree that their active search was very much more impressive. I totally understand where you're coming from on that. I would be okay with negotiating with them, but it would be from a position of, you need to hire us because you need us as a reference to get into this market. And so it has to be at a significant discount. And basically, they have to do it at a loss. And that's their business. They can choose to do a loss. Happens in business all the time. First customer, you do it at a loss to get the reference. So if they were willing to do that, but that's really aggressive negotiating. I don't mind doing that with the firm, but I would only be comfortable with them at a significant discount and with some additional commitments from their side. So I, if we're willing to go that way, okay. But I don't know if they'll meet us there or not. Doesn't hurt to ask. So it'd be interesting.
Ms. Lord?
Well, as the newbie, I mostly rely on you, just from having gone through this process. I haven't been through the process before. But one thought, probably I was concerned about someone not having worked at Massachusetts before, and I know Massachusetts has very, you know, specific licensure requirements. And so my thought would be probably our primary pool of candidates might be local to Massachusetts. And so even if someone is able to actively recruit but doesn't have connections here, how valuable is that going to be if they don't know the Massachusetts candidates? They more international, you know, national. And I'm not totally sure in terms of superintendent, maybe you could even speak to that, Dr. Brand, but just in terms of the licensure, I mean, doesn't someone need, what are, you know, the expectations for having a Massachusetts license? So a little bit maybe more challenging bringing someone in from another state?
There's always, certainly, it's not uncommon for someone who's licensed outside of the state to be able to apply for and receive licensure. There are, I mean, that happens, but licensure is an essential component. And I would strongly expect that any of the firms that you're gonna do would have to be looking into the status of a potential candidate or candidates, and where they're at in that process, before they would even make their way to you, or to the screening committee or search committee. That would be a fundamental piece of that process, so.
Thank you. Ms. Ragsdale?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, that superintendents can pursue licensure after they get the job and while they're, while they're working in district. You're not supposed to wait too long. I think that, I think Brenda Casilius, who's the Boston superintendent before the current one, before Mary Skipper was, got in trouble for like never getting around to it for after like two or three years. But that's something that they can definitely pursue while they, you know, after they arrive and start, so that's not necessarily an impediment. I think that, I did think a lot about this aspect of the, sort of the active recruiting, because I did think that that was a, something that was, you know, a real asset of their approach, of kind of going out and looking for people. But I think it would probably benefit us less than it would other districts or organizations. This kind of partly goes back to my idea that like we're not necessarily a good fit, because I think that the kind of people that they would be able to reach out to kind of nationwide, unless they already have Massachusetts ties, and not to sell our district short, but, you know, we're a twenty-eight-hundred-student suburban district, you know, in the, you know, half hour north of Boston. And is this something that you necessarily are going to move your family and your life across country to come here if you don't already have some kind of Massachusetts connection? And we're like maybe looking for an opportunity to come back to Massachusetts if you started here. So I feel that we would not benefit as much from that aspect of their, of their offering, based on just the overall circumstances of our district and the likely pool of candidates who would be interested in our superintendency.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I, I thought all three brought certainly strengths to the proposal process, and I could see benefits to each one. The thing I wrestled with, I think really with HYA, was the cost. And I know we've kind of talked about it in the room, but knowing that part of our charge is to be, you know, stewards of taxpayer dollars, you're looking at thirty-three thousand dollars, not including travel costs. Anytime we want one or both of them in a meeting here, we have to pay for them to come here. So we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay more than what we were quoted for. So for me, it really, it came down to NESDEC or MASC. And while I appreciate the comments around the table, I appreciate the familiarity we have with MASC. I think having that familiarity, for me, lends itself to a better working relationship. So that would be, I would be happy with NESDEC. I would prefer MASC, so.
I guess I'll go.
Please.
So having, I mean, I think the points that you've all made, I've had those same thoughts at some point. I'm like, ooh, that's interesting. Oh, that's neat. The, having served as the chair for both Dr. Brand's and this past interim or co-chair with Andrea, having the consultant know what exactly needs to be said, how it needs to be said, when you're in executive session, doing the training, the open meeting law, like that is, that is absolutely essential, especially because this time Andrea will not be co-chairing that with us. It'll be, I'm hoping that actually I will be chairing, although anyone could, any one of us could do that, right? But, and so someone who has done this, I'm, they're my guide. I'm looking to them to make sure that we're doing things properly, things are being, sort of like, everything's being documented in the right way, we're getting the information we need, and then it's coming to you, sort of in that final stage. So the fact that, that he didn't know any was ver, I was like, oh my goodness, this could be just disastrous almost. That's how I felt. Like, having sat in that seat, I was like, oh, gosh, because I really rely on them, especially the first time we did it. I was brand-new, and so NESDEC walked me through. And I don't, I was like, wait, where's the motion? They're like, here it is, right here. Like, you definitely need them really like guiding you along. So I don't, I don't have any interest in HYA, although I agree with all of you that I think that active recruitment is really interesting. Not sure it's necessary, as David is mentioning. I think that, you know, for the reasons he said, so I won't repeat that, but I kind of sit in that same space. I am a little torn between MASC and NESDEC. I've worked with NESDEC now twice, but I, having looked through these proposals again, I, I kind of am leaning toward MASC, to be honest, in this one. So I really thought that Alicia seemed like she could be a really great sort of hands-on consultant, could be there, present with us, stated that she would be there at all of those meetings and spaces. And I appreciate that. I think that it's tough to serve in that role, and having someone sort of as your go-to, who knows the Massachusetts landscape like no other, is very, very helpful, I think, to get that right person in there. Yeah, so I think I'm leaning in that direction, but I was really sort of on the fence, but it, just kind of tallying what people have said, it looks like between those two, there's a little bit of a lean toward MASC. Okay?
Make a motion and narrow it down.
Yeah?
So, are we good? Nick?
Well, I was actually gonna ask, if we, so at the beginning of this discussion, it was mentioned that this might be something we could push to the retreat. Is that something that the chair and vice chair think would make sense, or do we think we're ready for a motion?
I mean, I'd feel like if somebody wants to make a motion, certainly I would entertain one. Mr. Ragsdale?
I don't think there's any point to pushing this off. I don't think we're gonna have more information than we do right now. And I think that the sooner that we get our chosen firm on board, the better.
The sooner we start working.
So I would prefer not to, not to put this off. I would make a motion to extend an offer to MASC.
Second. Okay. Motion, motion made and seconded yet, Mr. Golden. Further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, okay?
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. And a recent search that they did that I know ended up with a very successful candidate was the Nazit search.
I like how you left that until after the motion was made.
I heard good things about the result of that search for the district.
Are you sure that worked out?
And I will, I will just say that although they don't, they don't talk about this active recruitment, both NESDEC and MASC will do that within there. I mean, they are very good, I think, about, at least from what they've said to me, about getting the word out, going to people that they think are interested in maybe making a change. And not just in Massachusetts, but sort of in the surrounding states. But I think we are right, we're not probably gonna get someone from California, right? I mean, I guess it could happen, but, yeah, for the most part. But I think this is the right choice for us right now, and I'm excited to enter in with them.
And so you will reach out to them?
I will reach out to them, which probably is something we should at least talk about, maybe at the retreat, about sort of who, thinking about who might want to serve on that. And then obviously, Jesse and I have just had some informal conversations about sort of supporting the interim superintendent and supporting this search, and so sort of dividing and conquering, so that, and I think actually, Mr. Turner, you may have mentioned that to me, but sort of Jesse's saying, okay, I'm gonna take on and really work with Dr. Thompson, and Jen's gonna kind of lead this part, and that way we're not both doing double duty, but.
Okay. Very good. All right, moving along. Dr. Brand, administrative search updates.
There is nothing in the packet, but just a normal update for you. A lot of activity behind the scenes on three administrative or leadership searches. That includes the middle school assistant principal search, the coordinator of behavioral health, and the assistant superintendent for administration and finance. So nothing to announce today, tonight, rather, but as I said, lots of activity that has and is taking place and continues this week. It's been an active week with full commitment to try and finalize these searches before I depart, as long as we have the right candidates respectfully in each of these roles. So I anticipate that we'll be very, very close with the possibility of a couple of announcements by the end of the week, if not the end of the week, the very beginning of next week. So please stay tuned for that. The one thing that I'll just point to, as a friendly reminder, there's no action by this committee required on the middle school assistant principal appointment. There's no action for the coordinator of behavioral health. There is an action that you need to appoint for Paul's replacement, and that falls under statute for the oversight of budgets. So I've talked with the chair and vice chair about that, and we'll, again, if we can finalize that search, we'll do so, all of these, but in particular that. And that's something I think you could take up at the next meeting of this full committee, whether that be a retreat or some meeting thereafter. Okay?
Good. Okay, hearing none. Dr. Brand, you're up again for the cell phone working group.
Cell phone working group, there is a memo that accompanies this item in the packet. And just again, for those maybe watching at home and might be saying, well, wait, didn't we do something around cell phone working group this year? And the answer is yes, but this is, I suppose, two-point-oh, as a, as a view, a view ahead to next year. And in talking with the chair and vice chair, their request was that I put something together that could serve tonight as a, as a jumping off point, the opportunity to gather your feedback and thoughts around how this moves forward and into next year. Just as a reminder, the reason ultimately that this is back is this first pass this year was, I think, a good first attempt to try and gather some feedback and information from stakeholders. But felt like this needed to go a little bit deeper, a little bit further, in terms of finalizing potential policy development by this committee. Running right alongside this is continued activity at the, at the state level around proposed legislation that would bring into place, if passed, you know, something that would govern this potentially across the entire state. I can tell you, as being a part of the legislative committee for the superintendent association, this is a topic that they're talking about regularly. So again, I think that you'll see activity. How quickly this comes to be, uncertain. But what is certain to me is that if this in any way does emerge as legislation, ultimately it will be left to local, the local level to put a framework around that. And so I think that it's in the best interest of the district and the committee. And so, I think that it's in the best interest of the district and the committee for you to push further on this and finalize what this would be from a policy, from your school committee policy standpoint. Um, and so, what's proposed here is, um, uh, two, uh, two different groups, two different dots here. One, bringing together, uh, the, at the secondary level, the middle school and high school, and then to have, uh, an elementary level working group. And the, and the rationale behind that, a couple of things there. One, uh, the alignment seems far more clear, likely, uh, between the middle school and high school level, to have more, uh, similarities than differences, potentially, for what comes out of what this would look like. And number two, um, uh, you know, the opportunity to bring student voice into this as well, uh, to, or student representation. Uh, and then you can see the proposal for the elementary, um, level working group. The purpose is captured on the, on the second page of the memo, um, really ultimately leading to, uh, recommendations that would come forth from these working groups to use a school committee, um, and that specifically, if there is a bell-to-bell, uh, legislation or state law that comes into place, how do you want to contend with that? And similarly, if there's not ultimately legislation, still leaves the question of where do you wanna land, um, as a school committee on, on this important matter. The timeline that, uh, has been outlined here for, uh, is a suggest, this is all suggestion, but, um, around early September, call for volunteers, um, and then, uh, again, a year-long process, and I think that there's a little more time here, as that this legislation could, as I understand it, and those of you around the table have more insight around what that looks like than me, uh, around timelines for legislation, but even if legislation is to emerge at some point next year, something that would ultimately, um, need to go in, into place in the fall. There, there's the potential here, the final point for a budgetary aspect, too, and, um, being on some of these calls with some colleagues who have already implemented something like this, these, these yonder pouches, there's different, um, different tools or different, I'm not sure how to describe them, but different, um, different things, whatever it is out there, uh, for, for, for these cell phones, and there is potential implications from a budgetary standpoint, uh, for, um, if ultimately as a school, you're going to a place where, you know, these, these devices are locked and secured, that's number one. And number two, um, there's also potential implication for a district like us, I think I mentioned this last time, where we do allow students to bring their own devices. That is, um, I won't say uncommon, but there's certainly lots of other districts that don't do that, and they provide all of those devices, and I'm specifically talking about laptops or computers, and so, depending on how this lands, this is also gonna be important to watch, because that had, could have an implication on that aspect of things. So, there's a lot here. At the end of the day, this is here for your, your feedback with the hopes that this can shape something that you're comfortable with, and that I can share with Dr. Thompson, uh, as, as one of the, um, early things that, uh, I would anticipate you'd expect him to lead and roll out. Okay?
Very good. Thank you very much. Questions, comments on the recommendation? Dr. Bryson?
David was first, but.
Mr. Exel?
I just wanted to say, okay, can I go?
Yes, you can.
I just wanna, I'm, I just wanted to make sure that there shouldn't be a school committee member, only because it is gonna go to policy, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that I was like, ooh, should there be a school committee member present in that? But, that's all. I don't need an answer, just throwing out my ideas.
Thank you. Mr. Exel?
Uh, so in the, under the purpose section, um, one of the, what does it say? Let's see, 1A talks about recommend whether WPS should follow the legislation in whole or in part. I'm assuming, but just to clarify here, that you mean essentially in areas where there may be discretion, or that where, where there's, districts have the ability to figure out how to implement whatever the legislation says?
Yes.
Um, that we would do that, because obviously, we have to follow the legislation in whole. Does, ah, we don't like that part of the legislation, we're just gonna ignore that part of the law, is, is not gonna.
Absolutely, but just to make, absolutely, yes, but the, again, what I sort of have been picking up in some of these different conversations, is there's still this piece around, you know, the implementation at the local level, and there's, the, to the degree that there is some discretion for that local level implementation, what does that look like in order to align?
Right, well, like, the legislation is not gonna say all districts must lock up phones in yonder pouches, but it may just say, like, phones need to be inaccessible to students, uh, you know, during the, during the school day. It's like, all right, well, there are a lot of, a lot of different ways you could do that. Um, what I, what I would like to see, I think, moving, um, moving forward in this, is I think that we need to be moving towards that, no matter what, by that, I mean, like, the, the bell-to-bell cellphone ban, that was the recommendation from the work of this year's working group, uh, again, that's clearly where everything is moving, and so, whether the legislation happens at all, or whether it's ready by next year, I think that at a local district policy level, that should be our policy. And, um, when we came to the, sort of the end of this process, when we got the update at the, sort of the conclusion of the, of this year's working group, um, my, uh, the reason that I was not, of course, ready to move forward with anything for the following school year, is that there were so many details of implementation to be worked out. How would that look? How would we actually make that happen? And to me, that's what this all needs to be about. So, I think that these working groups, essentially, their charge needs to be that we are moving towards a bell-to-bell cellphone policy for the '26, '27 school year. And the purpose here is to work out all the details in terms of how that will happen, from, you know, from the actual places, like, where will the phones be, the budgetary implications, exactly as Dr. Brand said, um, as well as the answers to questions that we need to have for our community, in terms of how will emergency communications be handled, uh, how will messages be passed to students, and so forth. So, all of those details that, uh, you know, we don't have yet, which is why we're not ready for it yet, but I think that that's kind of the, the idea of what we're moving towards, and I would, I would like to see that come through a little bit more clearly, and I don't know if that, I don't think maybe the school committee needs to take a vote on that yet, uh, for that policy, but, uh, but that's at least, it, to my mind, uh, kind of what the charge of these committees, of these working groups should be for the coming school year.
I think that's good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, right now, we have teachers that encourage the use of cell phones for certain tasks. Take a picture of this thing and send it to me. If we're headed in this direction, I think there should be direction from the four principals involved in the fall to ask teachers not to do that, starting this fall, to start to get in the habit, so when '26, '27 rolls around, it's not a sudden change. So, we've got high school teachers or middle school teachers who've habitually done this, getting them to start thinking now of different ways to accomplish what they've been doing with cell phones, because I, I remember an art class in the middle school where, do your work, take a picture and submit the picture, to me as part of the assignment, and, and the Chromebooks take pictures that were not sufficient, for whatever reasons. So, how would they accomplish that? If they can start that process now, it's not a sudden change, and just makes it easier when we get there. Um, so I think there's work that can be done by the principals and teachers, starting in the fall. Um, I do think, and I've thought from the start, that middle school and high school may look very different, just based on the maturity of the kids and the activities of the kids, and so I'm a little concerned with lumping those two together. Um, perhaps they can be lumped together and still get to two different answers, but I'm not, I'm not convinced that they should be together. Um, I'm not gonna, I, I'm, I'm not hard and fast that they have to be separated, but I'm a little, little concerned. Um, I certainly, and to the, the bell-to-bell directive, I've certainly seen districts that have been much more strict with middle school than high school, and applied things differently in the two. And then the last thing is, to that point, I think for high school, having a minimum of two students, ideally more, would be essential. Middle school, maybe two is the right number, um, but I do think getting student buy-in, and certainly parent buy-in, but student buy-in at the high school level, and student, student, um, description of their needs, non-academically, I do it for work, I do it for picking up siblings, I blah, blah, what are the reasons why they might need it at lunch, for example? I mean, is it four bells in the high school? You know, it's bell-to-bell in the morning, bell-to-bell in the afternoon, but there's a break in the middle. So, is that the type of nuance we need because there's stu, student life needs that we would capture best with more student involvement? So, I think that might be a nuance, and might be a place to, to change that, that group particularly, um, but those are, those are my thoughts on it at this point.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other feedback? Okay, hearing none? You got that?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, moving on, we are going to take a quick diversion, and before we get to subcommittee reports, we're gonna spend a couple of minutes, and we're gonna celebrate Dr. Brand, which I'm sure he's gonna love. Um, instead, we're gonna get to the end of the meeting, and we were gonna, we were gonna, uh, spend a few minutes expressing our appreciation and our gratitude for Dr. Brand. Uh, so, I have had my chance, I will let, uh, members of the committee feel free to throw out their, their comments. I know Dr. Bryson has a couple of gifts that she's compiled, we have a plaque that you're gonna have to open, so we can take a photo, um, but.
Okay.
Members of the committee, who wants to start? Don't be shy.
I'll go first. Mr. Golden? Um, so, Dr. Brand, I've, I've known you the second sorest amount of time, I think probably relative to Ms. Lord, but, um, you know, I didn't go to schools with superintendents growing up, so actually, I didn't, I didn't know, think much of them, um, generally, or not, not in a negative way, but just like, superintendent's this kind of obscure role, but I think for the rest of my life, if I hear the word superintendent, I'm gonna think of you. Um, and I think that's, it's a, it's something that a lot of folks are gonna have to, to live up to, um, I'm sure many will, um, but, uh, I just wanna say, like, like I said, for Paul, we'll come back to Paul eventually, too. Public service is so important, so important, and I think that you've done a great job of combining the public service with the kind of vision component, that I think, right, having done this now for a year plus, a year and a half, is, is so difficult to thread that needle, so I just wanna say good luck, um, don't let them walk you off the plank, down the cave, and, uh, you're always welcome to come back to this district that you have served so, so very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Mr. Turner? So, um, I have this eight-page presentation I wanna read, it's seven years from review, um, because I think it says it so well, but, but what I really do wanna say is, is above all, I've appreciated, um, a few things. One, you're, it's always been so clear that you're an educator at heart, and that all these topics come back to educators. I remember sitting in the Roman House, in some of the education, the space programming discussions we had, and those conversations, and the way you were able to, to manage and lead those, um, but certainly, it's, it's impossible to think of where we are with the Wildwood Project without thinking of you. I, uh, to, to, to Mr. Golden's point, thinking of what a superintendent should be and, and can be, I, I certainly will, will think of the way you've led this district the last seven years for, for the rest of my life, um, but I, I think the leadership and the building of a really good team, um, and getting us through COVID, um, all those things, your support of the different programs, from the arts to the athletics, um, to the, to the day-to-day education, um, it's been so consistent, and it's so well-appreciated, um, and, and, and the fact that you've enjoyed this so much, that you wanted to go to a place where you had 30 school committee members, and five school committee meetings, I mean, clearly, this is the space you're most comfortable, so I appreciate that, I take that as a compliment. Um, and then beyond that, I'll just, everything MJ said, having sat next to her for a couple years, is spot-on, um, and I really appreciate that she took the time to come and speak with us today, I really do appreciate the way she phrased it all, um, and I, and, and I'll, I'll just stop there, but thank you very much. Um, I will miss my opportunities to heckle you from time to time, um, I'm sure I'll find ways.
I, I thank you. You will.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Dr. McCollough?
Sure. Uh, so, I don't know you, I didn't, I have known you as long as some other people here, but longer than Mr. Golden. Uh, I, I just wanna say thank you. Um, I think MJ put it really well, yeah, I've been in the community for a while, but my kids are on the younger side, but I do remember there was a lot of turmoil here in the late 2010s and everything, and I think you really stabilized things a lot, and you really helped with this committee, the leadership team, the principals, teachers, really improved the district to such a high functioning level right now. Um, so, my kind of world, you know, um, there's a saying, you wanna train your own replacement, right? And, um, you don't have the luxury of doing that if you're a role, but I think the way you have left things is now gonna make it easier for this committee to find someone who is just as good as you are, so I just wanna say thank you for all that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Point of personal privilege.
Please.
Can I step away for a brief moment?
Of course.
Thank you.
Mr. Exel?
Uh, so, the, the first time that I met Dr. Brand was actually in his interview at the, for the screening committee, and I won't break any of the executive privilege, uh, of that meeting, other than to say that, uh, you know, from the very beginning with, uh, you know, your very, very first answers, I just kind of remember, like, more or less, my thinking, like, no, just like, this guy's good. Uh, and, uh, and then I got to see exactly how good over, uh, the last seven years, and it's, uh, you know, there were times when I, you know, it's like, I didn't know how you did it, you know, and that, when we were in the depths of COVID, just trying to figure out how to open up schools, how to have a school, and like, how, how do we do school? And like, we can't possibly be near each other, and there were no good solutions, there were just only terrible trade-offs, and, uh, and yet, you know, you just, you know, you kept your positivity and your equanimity, and just that kind of, you know, it's a, it's a metaphor that I've used, you know, a lot, but I think it's, it's so true, just that that steady hand on the tiller, to just keep us moving forward and saying, we are going to get through this, um, and, uh, and, you know, and, and we did, and we have been on, you know, an upward trajectory, um, ever since then. You know, I think about the, uh, you know, the influence that you've had, I think that the, you know, the, the, the part of the way that you measure, you know, a superintendent is just not just the, you know, the yearly accomplishments and kind of like where you are, but you think about the momentum you have, you think about the lasting change that's going to continue moving forward. Uh, and in particular, um, like, one of the things that I think is most important about that is the, the leadership team that you've kind of assembled around yourself and, uh, and throughout the district, uh, through just, you know, this incredibly rigorous progress and our process, um, as well as just, you know, strong ethic and, uh, great judgment, that there's a team of people now in the district to kind of, you know, follow the Brand way, uh, and I think that one of the, you know, one of the, one of, one of the characteristics of, uh, of an excellent leader is kind of the legacy of leaders that you leave behind, to whom you've passed on your skills, um, and your values, and, uh, and I think that we have, you know, a legacy of that in Wilmington that's going to benefit us, um, for a long time. And I'll, I'll finish by, uh, essentially just quoting myself from my superintendent value, just, uh, just 'cause I already wrote it down, so, uh, I'll just do that there.
Great man.
Now, to quote a wise man, uh, who, who wrote, uh, several days ago, "Dr. Brand truly found his calling as a superintendent, because he loves the work of leading a district toward better outcomes for kids, and he does the work with patience, enthusiasm, and skill." Uh, and I wish you well in Nozzet, and I will always be grateful for the time that you spent in Wilmington.
Thank you.
Can I? Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Ms. Lord?
Well, I didn't get the opportunity to work with you for very long at all. Um, I'm actually genuinely wish I had the chance to work with you longer, and this short time it's been, you know, terrific, and just listening to all the feedback everyone has, all the accomplishments, it's really been incredible, and so, as someone who grew up in this town, you know, and has seen this town for a very long time, you know, it, it just means a lot, and, uh, my son now being in second grade will reap the benefits of all the work you've done, so when I hear of everything happening, you know, at every level, like, as a parent, you know, really deeply grateful, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bryson?
Can I go? All right, so basically, everyone's saying that you are a superhero, so, I, um, we have a, some superhero cupcakes that we'll have to bring over and showcase in a second. Um, I will also quote myself in the, in the recommendation letter, I, I was asked to write, actually, um, when Glenn told me he was, he had, this, this job had presented itself, and he's like, you're not gonna wanna do the, and so I.
I did, um, graciously, but I said at the end, "In every aspect of his work, Dr. Brand exemplifies leadership, integrity, and an unwavering commitment to excellence. I am confident he will continue to make a significant and positive impact in all of his future endeavors. While we had hoped that Dr. Brand would be our leader for many more years till retirement, I wholeheartedly recommend him without reservation." Um, you have been literally our superhero, and I was so happy to have MJ come back, because I feel like she was there, um, at those spaces where, where I sat in the very beginning of, of my tenure on this committee, and to see how we have just gotten to where we are under your leadership, it's truly, I just sit there and go, it's, it's brilliant. I mean, I'm early days, I was like, wow, like, you're really like, you are so beyond, it's like playing chess, like, he's so beyond where I am, I'm like, oh, you already thought I'm like, oh, you already thought about that. So I'm so lucky that we've been able to work with you. Like my colleagues have said, I feel like we're on the, the right path and I'm so jealous, so very jealous of NOSIT. But you know, you will always have a home here and I hope that you will come back and visit us, especially as our, hopefully our new building opens and, and all of those things that you have, that you literally contributed to this district. So I, I've said it over and over again, I hope that the community realizes what you have done, what you have provided to us, because I don't think that they can see it maybe now a little bit, and it's almost unfortunate that we do all this celebration now, but we've tried over the years to say, this is pretty amazing, he's pretty amazing, like, and so I hope that you feel as though this has been more than a job well done and we are so eternally grateful. On a less serious note, we provided for your future school committee some advice for them. So I will not read through the advice because that is something that you should take in, I think, on your own, but I will read some of the titles just so that people can get a sense of what this might look like. Oh, it's not, no, it's not. No, we won't do that. But just from, just a little, a couple of pieces of advice for your future school committee, be prepared, there is no such thing as a short meeting. Your colleague, Paul. Beware of Canadianisms, is that a word?
It is.
By your lovely friend, Christine Elliott. Don't bother with cake and cookies, so that is my contribution. Nick has said, avoid the late meeting. Jesse, hockey is a priority. M.G. Burns, in a very long comment, said, keep comments under 10 minutes. I hope I did this right, Mike. So he said he secretly likes to shred the mountains on skis and so I changed it to Glenn, the mountain shredder. Does that work?
Shred the R.
I'll just leave this at big daddy, I don't, I'll just leave it there. Concise is not in his vocabulary. So that might have been one of the funniest things I think we heard when we watched the NOSIT school committee meeting and Jesse and I were like, hmm, he's so concise. And Jesse and I were like, hmm, okay. And there are some more for you to enjoy, there's Glennisms, a handful of tips. Jason Maha sent something in and then something from, from Ken Lord about keeping photos and secure locations. So anyway, I hope that you will enjoy reading through this. And you may or may not provide it to your future, that's up to you, that's up to you. This is a gift that kind of goes along with our superhero cupcakes and then I just want to get those so that everyone can see them.
Am I supposed to open this?
You can open it, sure.
Is that wise? Is it wise?
All right. Just so that the TV can see.
Get this party started, Brand.
We can't eat on TV, so we'll have to wait until after. So this is tenured for your new office.
This is great. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you so much.
And I'm sure that they will recognize your superhero qualities very, very soon.
Thank you very much. I'll let you open this so we can get a picture, but I just want to again sort of reiterate what everybody has said. I don't know that I ever told you this story, but you were interviewing for this role when I was running for the committee. And I recall sitting more or less where Scott is in the back the night of interviews and admittedly was rooting for another candidate. I had a.
You were.
I had a prior personal relationship with one of the other candidates that I knew, that I knew well. And you interviewed and I remember sitting in the back thinking, man, this is, this is the easiest decision this committee is ever going to make. This guy is, is far and away the best candidate that they're going to interview. And then I got elected and your first thing was to call an executive session, if I recall, for a grievance and I had, I didn't even know how to get into this building, let alone what to do. But jokes aside, I think, you know, we all have been fortunate to get a chance to work with you, some of us longer than others. And certainly the community has benefited, but the few of us who have, you know, served in these leadership roles and been able to work with you behind the scenes and seen, you know, really the, the love, the compassion, the dedication that goes into it, I can't, I think Jen said it really well, I can't stress to the community enough how fortunate we've been to have you for the last seven years and how deeply we're going to miss you and appreciate everything you've done. So I won't keep going, but we wish you the best and thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Certainly would welcome any comments you might have if you feel so inclined.
You know, I will, thank you. Thank you for all of the kind words. This is not my thing, as you know, I struggle with this. But, you know, in a similar sort of way, you, one of the things that I wish that the community at large could see, they see sort of one slice of the work that, that, that you do as a committee and those that have come before you. And to see what I, we get to see behind the scenes with all the time and the, and the energy and the hours that, that you put in to make this work doable and, and rewarding is, is something that I wish the, the community at large could see. Because we, Christine and Paul and, and Ken and others get, we get to see that and we get to, you know, walk away. We, we know the landscape of this tough work in other communities and when you, when you don't have great people who are in these seats, boy, it can be a whole, a whole, a whole different world. But I, I, seven, thinking about this, seven years ago, I didn't know an awful lot about Wilmington, except that I came here for hockey, or my, my family came here for hockey practice when the Bruins still practiced here. But I have come to learn so much about Wilmington and the great place that it is. I said this many times, I wish our family had discovered Wilmington because it, it would have been a great place to, to raise our, our family. So it's, look, it's, I've got a few, a little bit of time left, but I won't be a stranger. I will be closely tracking that project in, in September, confident that it will, you know, take the, the district in the next direction that it hopefully will have a chance to go. The opportunity to lead has been an incredible experience and thank you for, for the trust that you've placed in me. And have a good rest of the year and a great next year. Thank you.
And I think we have two very quick things to get through. Subcommittee reports, hearing none. Correspondence? Future school committee dates and other notable items. Tomorrow night is the Wilmington Middle School moving up ceremony at 7:00 PM on the Town Common, weather permitting, weather looks great. June 16th, Monday is the last day of school for this year and it is an early dismissal. Coming up shortly thereafter, August 27th is the first day of school of the 2025-2026 school year for grades one through 12. And September 2nd, 2025, the first day of the 25-26 school year for the Wildwood and the Boutwell students. Nothing to add? All right. And for the last time in the 2024-2025 school year, I would look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. By Mr. Golden, second. Mr. Turner, all those in favor?
Do we have to?
And good night.